I'm just asking you to bear with us tonight because every meeting we've had on Zoom has had some sort of glitch. So we just ask for your patience and grace tonight and we will give everyone with our time tonight a chance to participate and talk about the cases. Someone breathing into their headphones a lot.
Yes, hello, this is Blake Shield.
Hi Blake.
How you doing Susan?
Good, how are you?
Good, just wasn't sure if we were introducing ourselves or.
Well, we will, once we get through a little bit of the housekeeping stuff, we will call and start the cases and go from there. So I'm just going to ask everybody to mute their, their microphones and we will do what we can to make sure everybody gets heard here.
Absolutely, you got it.
Thanks. Thank you. Appreciate it Will. I'm looking for, I'm looking for Lee, I'm not seeing him yet, but he said he was going to be here tonight, so.
Can we go and start the meeting Susan then?
Somehow you weren't the one before, but make sure that you're not breathing into the microphone. So without Lee here, we can, because we have a quorum, let's wait for Lori to get back in the room to be taking notes though. What is that sound? Oh, Lee's here, so once Lori gets back in here, we're good.
Somebody went up the wrong exit? Let me go back in this way, because I didn't want to go that way and then you can lock out my keys and have to back on the road. You know, the funny thing is, I just asked Tim about this earlier about this.
Oh, you actually have something about it? Hot dogs, okay. All right, I'm sorry for the delay here, we actually had a building alarm go off, we're just trying to get that noise to go away because it's bothering the entire meeting here. Anyone who has only a partial name or initials, could you please rename yourselves to put your full name in? Because I need to take an attendance based on what I see in participants. Thank you.
I call this meeting to order at 18:39. Will the clerk please call the rule? We can't hear you.
Anderson.
Present.
Elwell.
Present.
Marilyn.
She wasn't participating.
Randall.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
Anyone wishing to testify for any public hearing must sign into the Zoom with their full name. Is there any correspondence for the board other than the cases pending?
No.
We do not have any minutes. I would like to ask the board if I could have a motion to move to case 999-am-21 and 001-b-21 before case 998-s-21.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Randall, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Wood, roll call vote please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes, motion carries. I call new case 999-am-21 and 001-b-21. Petitioners Leon, Michelle, and Brad Ash, DBA Galesburg, Galesville Elevator Company. Case 999-am-21 amend the zoning map to change the zoning district designation from the B5 Central Business District and the R1 Single Family Residence Zoning District to B1 Rural Trade Center Zoning District for the continued use of the grain storage elevator in Benz. Case 001-b-21 authorize the following variance from the zoning ordinance in the B1 Rural Trade Center Zoning District, subject to the approval of the rezoning in case 999-am-21. Per section 5.3 of the zoning ordinance, part A, a variance for the southernmost existing grain ring on County Road 3050 North with a front yard of zero feet and a setback of 38 feet from the street center line. In lieu of the minimum required 25 feet front yard and 55 feet setback. Part B, a variance for the existing grain ring on the southeast corner of the 2.44 acre subject property with a front yard of 16 feet on County Road 3050 North and a front yard of 23 feet and a setback of 43 feet on the north-south segment of County Road 3055 North. In lieu of the minimum required 25 feet front yard and 55 feet setback. Part C, a variance for the existing non-conforming storage building on the 2.44 acre subject property with a front yard of four feet and a setback of 24 feet from the street center of the north-south segment of County Road 3055 North. In lieu of the minimum required 25 feet front yard and 55 feet setback. Part D, a variance of the existing accessory storage building located on lots 7, 8, and 9 on the east-west segment of County Road 3055 North with a front yard of zero feet, a setback of 33 feet from the street center line and a rear yard of six feet. In lieu of the minimum required 25 feet front yard, 55 feet setback, and 15 feet rear yard. Part E, a variance for the existing grain ring located on lots 10, 11, and 12 of the east-west segment of County Road 3055 North with a front yard of zero feet and a setback of 33 feet from the center line of County Road 3055 North. A front yard of zero feet and a setback of 45 feet from the street center along the east of the lot 12, east of lot 12, and a rear yard of 10 feet. In lieu of the minimum required 25 front yard, 55 feet setback, and 20 feet rear yard. Part F, a variance for the proposed grain bin with a rear yard of four feet. In lieu of the minimum required 20 feet. Part G, a variance for the, from requiring a type D screen to conceal outdoor storage in operations that are visible from residential use within 1,000 feet of the subject property. Subject property lots 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, a block two of Howard, original town, now the unincorporated town of Lotus. And one to be vaca, and one to be vacated, 40-foot wide road right of way located west of lot 7 and one 2.44 acre tract for a total of 3.431 acres in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of section 31 Township 22 North Range 7, east of the Third Principal Meridian and Brown Township and commonly known as the Galesville Elevator Company with the address of 10 County Road 3050 North Fooseland. Area is 3.431 total acres and the time scheduled for development is already in use. This is an administrative case and such the county allows anyone the opportunity to cross-examine any witness. After each witness, I will ask if anyone would like to cross-examine and if you do, please say so and I will call on you when it is your turn and you can ask your questions. Those who cross-examine are asked to clearly state their name before asking questions. When you do cross-examine a witness, please do not give testimony during the cross-examination. Also attorneys who have complied with article 6.5 of the ZBA bylaws are exempt from cross-examination. Mr. Ash, would you please state your name and your address and then tell us a little bit about your, your request?
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, um, our, our request, or my name is Bradley Ash, I'm with Galesville Elevator. Our, our request is to rezone our elevator from the, oh, at, sorry. The business address is 10 County Road 3050 North and that's Fooseland, Illinois, 61845.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Would, would you like me to just tell you a little bit about our business?
Please, and thank you. Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, cut out, sir.
Yes, please tell us about your request.
Okay, well, our, our request, we would like to rezone, our, a little background. Our, when not, when the zoning ordinance came out in the, in the seventies, our elevator, original elevator was zoned B5 Central Business. And here recently, we wanted, we want to construct a new grain bin. And before we can get a permit, we need to have our facility zoned correctly, which would be the B1 Rural Trade, Rural Trade Center. So in order for us to be able to construct a new grain bin, that's why we are asking to rezone the facility. With, with the new zoning, those are why we are at, with the new zoning, there are different setbacks, which explains most of the variances that we're asking for. A lot of these buildings were constructed prior to, some of these structures were constructed prior to the seventies. We, we bought this facility in 1986 and there, I, I believe the shed, what, a few of the structures were constructed afterwards that had to do with some of the other variances. But in order to get everything, I, I guess, everything into compliance before we can build a grain bin, we, that's why we're, we're before the board today.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Are there any questions from the board?
Unmute. Mr. Ash, the, the proposed structure that you're going to put up on the north side of that property, it shows that the backyard on that is about four feet, is that the distance off of the property line?
That, that is correct, it would be no closer than four feet to the property line.
The, is that a little bit tight for, I mean, if you have to get around the bin for any particular reason, is that, uh, I mean, is that going to have a, be a problem with your neighbor to the north?
No, that, that shouldn't be any issue with our neighbor to the north. I'm, I'm currently in talks with the family to purchase some land behind the elevator to ease any tensions in the future.
John, one question that I have for you is with the grain storage only being in B1 and I1, what's the difference between the grain storage elevator and then the feed and grain for sales only? And I'm referencing attachment E.
Well, the elevator is where you sell your grain and the feed and grain sales is where literally livestock feed is sold. So they're, they're completely different things. For the life of me, I don't understand why elevators are not allowed in the B5 district. It makes no sense whatsoever.
That was kind of my question, but. Okay.
You didn't make the rule.
No. And I can't change them.
But there's a really good process that we have tonight that will be able to possibly make this work. Are there any other questions from the board?
No.
Any questions from the staff? How would the board like to proceed?
Would like to go over some conditions that we have in here.
So it looks like we're going to be on page 19 of 23 on case 999-am-21. Mr. Ash, with this case, we will be asking for some special conditions. I'm going to read the one special condition that we have. And if you are in agreement with the special condition, just answer in the affirmative, please. Attachment N, page 19 of 23, the following are proposed special conditions of approval. A, the owners of the subject property hereby recognize and provide for the right of agricultural activities to continue on adjacent land consistent with the right to farm resolution 3425. A special condition stated above is required to ensure the following, conformance with the policy 4.2.3 of the Land Resource Management Plan. Are you in agreement with that, sir?
I, I guess I don't understand the question, my, my apologies, could you, could you refer, could you run that by me again, sorry?
Yes, so I'm reading a special condition that we're asking you to either affirm or deny. What we're asking for the special condition is the owners of the subject property hereby recognize and provide the right of agriculture activities to continue on adjacent land consistent with the right to farm resolution 3425. The special condition stated above is to require, to ensure the following, conformance with the policy 4.2.3 of the Land Resource Management Plan.
It's, so you're, you're asking me to ensure that I allow the neighbors to farm and everything to be normal? Is that the way I understand that?
Correct.
Okay, ye, yes, I, what, what was, I'm sorry, what was I supposed to say?
Yes, either confirm it or deny.
Confirm, yes, I, I, yes, I let out the, yes.
Fantastic, thank you. Does anyone wish to cross-examine this petitioner? And if so, please indicate so. I'm not seeing any cross-examination questions. How would the board like to proceed?
This is Jim Randall, I'll make a motion, we accept the preliminary draft, the documents of records, and the one condition that has been stated and move on to the final determination. Or the summary findings in fact, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Back in.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, roll call vote.
Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Ash, I'm going to be reading on page 20. Mr. Ash, I'm going to be reading on page twenty-one of twenty-three of attachment N. At the top, it says summary findings of fact. From the documents of record and the testimony and exhibits received at the public hearing conducted on February eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the zoning board of appeals of Champaign County finds that, one, the proposed zoning ordinance map amend will help achieve the land resource management plan because, A, regarding goal three prosperity, one, although the proposed zoning is not directly relevant to any of the goal three objectives, the proposed rezoning will allow the petitioners to move and grow their operations with proper zoning, and will continue to serve the residents of Champaign County. Two, based on the achievement of the above, and because it will either not impede or it is not relevant to the other objectives and policies under this goal, the proposed map amendment will help achieve goal three prosperity. Item B, regarding the goal six, public health and safety. One, the proposed amendment will help achieve goal six point one, requiring the protection of the public health and public safety in the land resource management decisions because it will help achieve or it will not impede the following, A, policy six point one point two, requiring the proposed wastewater disposal and treatment systems of discretionary development will not endanger public health, create nuisance conditions or for adjacent uses, or negatively impact surface or groundwater quality. B, the proposed six point one point three, seeking to prevent the nuisance created by light and glare, limit excessive night lighting, and preserve clear views of the sky. C, policy six point one point four, seeking to abate blight and prevent and rectify improper dumping. Item C, regarding goal seven, transportation, one, the proposed amendment will help achieve objective seven point one, requiring the consideration of traffic impact in land use decisions because it will help achieve the following, A, policy seven point one point one, requiring traffic impact analysis for projects with significant traffic generation. Two, based on the achievement of the above objective and policies, and because it will either not impede or it is not relevant to the other objective and policies under this goal, the proposed map amendment will help achieve goal seven, transportation. Item D, the proposed amendment will not impede the following LRMP goals, one, goal one, planning and public involvement, goal two, governmental coordination. Goal four, agriculture, goal five, urban land use, goal eight, natural resources, goal nine, energy conservation, goal ten, cultural amenities. Item E, overall, the proposed map amendment will help achieve the land resource management plan. Two, the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment is consistent with the Los Alamos Sinclair factors because of the following, A, the proposed amendment will, would allow Galesville elevator to continue to support the area agriculture activities and expand its operations within New Grain Bin. B, the map amendment will help ensure the value of the subject property by allowing the continued operation of the grain elevator. C, the subject property is well-suited overall for the purpose of the land use. D, the subject property is, in its vicinity, has maintained the same uses for years. E, the proposed use of the service is a service better provided in a rural area. F, the proposed uses serves surrounding agricultural land uses. G, the proposed development is otherwise appropriate in the rural area. Item three, the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment will help achieve the purpose of the zoning ordinance because, A, establish the B one district at this location will place an existing grain elevator bins into a zoning district that allows this use and will help classify, regulate, and restrict the location of the use authorized in the B one district. B, establishing the B one district at this location will not require the development of public utilities or transportation facilities. C, establish the B one district at this location will not take any land out of production. Four, A, we've already read. Is there a motion to adopt the summary of evidence, documents of record, and the findings of fact as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Roll call vote, please.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes, motion carries. Do you have a motion to move to final determination?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Ash, we do not have a complete board here today. But you do need four affirmative votes. There are five board members present. Would you like us to continue with this case tonight, or would you like to postpone the case when we have a full board?
I would like to continue.
Fantastic. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Lori, we can't hear you.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Ash, I'm going to be reading on page twenty-three of twenty-three of attachment N. Final determination presented to the authority granted by section nine point two of the Champaign County zoning ordinance, this, the zoning board of appeals of Champaign County recommends that the zoning ordinance amendment requested in case nine 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 dash AM dash two one be enacted or not be enacted by the county board in the form attached here to, subject to the special conditions below.
Be enacted.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Roll call vote, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes. Moving to case zero zero one dash B dash two one. How would the board like to proceed? Do I have a motion to move to the findings of fact?
If you're on Ash twenty-one.
I don't know.
Zero zero one dash B dash two one.
All right. I'll make the motion to move to findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Roll call vote, please.
Did the board want to review the special conditions before the finding of fact?
There is one.
Oh, there is one.
Yeah.
I guess I missed it.
My apologies to the board. Mr. Ash, we are going to have one special condition that we will ask you to agree to in the affirmative. We're going to be reading on page fourteen of twenty of attachment O. Regarding proposed special conditions of approval, the zoning use permit for the proposed grain bin shall not be approved until Brown Township has recorded the final approval, approved road right-of-way vacation documents at the Champaign County Recorder of Deeds. The special condition stated above is to requ- is required to ensure the following, that the petitioner has secured all required permissions to construct in the yet-to-be-vacated road right-of-way. Are you in agreement to that, Mr. Ash?
Yes, I am in agreement.
Thank you, sir. So since we had a motion and a second, we didn't vote, so we will need a roll call vote. Y- you're muted, so, okay. So a, a roll call vote, please. You're still muted.
What's going on? Okay, Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Ash, I'm going to be reading on page sixteen of twenty of attachment O, findings of fact, from the documents of record and the testimony and the exhibits received at the public hearing for zoning case zero zero one dash V dash two one held on February eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the zoning board of Champaign County finds that, one, the special conditions and circumstances do or do not exist for which are peculiar to the land or the structure involved, which are not applicable to other similarly situated land and structures elsewhere in the same district because.
I would say they do exist because of an error in the official zoning map that occurred in nineteen seventy-three when the zoning was set up as B five. And it would be corrected to B one from the previous case.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Would we like to add anything about the southernmost grain rings?
I would add B, C, and D. I think they're all, all appropriate.
Would you be willing to read them, sir?
Sure. B, regarding the southernmost grain rings, number one, the plat of survey dated April twenty-first, nineteen eighty-six by Charles Danner shows CR thirty fifty N running through the two point four four acre subject property, which differs from the typical property line that would center on the roadway or north of the roadway. Number two, the grain rings were placed on the foundation of buildings constructed prior to adoption of the zoning ordinance on October tenth, nineteen seventy-three, which were destroyed by high winds in nineteen ninety-two. Regarding variance, C, regarding variance part F of a proposed new grain bin, there is no other place on the existing elevator properties except along the north property line. And D, regarding variance part G, for not requiring a type D screen for outdoor storage and operations, the petitioners have stored elevator material in the road right-of-way along both CR thirty fifty-five N north-south segment and CR thirty fifty-five north, the east-west segment for about ten years. Number one, the township highway commissioner provided a letter received February third, twenty twenty-one, stating that he is aware that the petitioners use this right-of-way for material storage and expressed no concerns.
Very well put, Mr. Wood. Item number two, practical difficulties or hardships created by carrying out the strict letter of the regulations sought to be varied will or will not prevent the reasonable or otherwise permitted use of the land or structure or construction because.
Let's say it will not, and without the proposed variance of A, B, C, and D, or A, B, D, and E, the petitioners would have to remove their existing grain bins with variance parts A, B, and E, and the existing storage building, which was part D. Without the variance of part C, the storage building constructed prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance on October tenth, nineteen seventy-three, it cannot be reconstructed in the same location should it be damaged or destroyed without first obtaining a variance. And without the proposed variance of part F, there would be insufficient space adjacent to the other grain bins to construct the new proposed seventy-two foot grain bin. And without the proposed variance of part G, the petitioners would have to either install eight-foot-tall vegetative screening or remove all materials stored outdoors along County Road thirty fifty-five north.
Mr. Randall, did you want to make that a motion to will prevent reasonable?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I say it incorrectly? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Item number three, a special condition, circumstances, hardships, or practical difficulties do or do not result from the actions of the applicant because.
They do not. The error of the official zoning map occurred on the adoption of October tenth, nineteen seventy-three, when B five zoning, which does not allow the grain bins and elevators land use, was assigned to the existing elevator in Lotus. The petitioner Leon Ash purchased the two point four four acre elevator site in nineteen eighty-six, and between nineteen eighty-six and two thousand and four, the P and Z department approved four permits for the subject property despite it having improper zoning with no explanation provided.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
That was a good one.
I could not have said that better myself. Item number four, the requested variance is or is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance because there are.
It is. Regarding setback and front yard requirements, there are no known expansion plans for CR thirty fifty, County Road thirty fifty north or County Road thirty fifty-five north. And regarding rear yard requirements, the nearest structure to the proposed grain bin on the non-elevator property is a residence that is approximately a hundred fifty feet to the southeast.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Number five, the requested variance will or will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare because.
And it will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare because brownship township highway commissioner has been notified of his variance and has provided a letter dated February third, twenty twenty-one, which stated the following, that he is aware of the petitioners' use of the right-of-way along County Road thirty fifty-five for material storage and has expressed no concerns. And two, he's working to vacate a forty by a hundred and twenty-seven feet right-of-way on the west side of lots number seven in the original town of Howard, also known as Lotus, Illinois, so that the elevator can build a new seventy-two foot diameter grain bin in that area. And then B, the township supervisor and the fire protection districts, neither one have expressed any concerns or negative comments. And C, all landowners in Lotus were notified of the proposed variance, and no comments have been received.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Item number six, the requested variance subject to the proposed condition is or is not in minimum variation that will make possible the reasonable use of the land or structure because.
It is because the, number one, the proposed variances A through E are for existing structures that cannot be moved without destroying them, and they were there prior to the originals the zoning ordinances went into, went into play. Two, the proposed grain bin has no other possible location adjacent to the other grain bins on the subject property. And C, the petitioners are discussing a possible land purchase with the owner to the north, but there's no guarantee of acceptance or a timeline.
Is there a motion to adopt the summary of evidence, the documents of record, and the findings of fact as amended?
You want to include the special conditions in there with that?
Yes.
Please and thank you.
Okay, and doing that, I will make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Roll call vote, please.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes. Mr. Ash, just like the previous case, we do not have a full board, but we do need four affirmative votes. If you would like us to continue with the vote, we could certainly. Uh if you would like us to continue with the vote, um we could certainly take care of that tonight, or if you wanted to push this case out to when a we have all uh six board members, we can certainly do that as well.
Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Do I have a motion to move to final determination?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Roll call vote, please.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes, motion carries. Mr. Ash, I want to be reading on page nineteen of twenty of attachment oh. At the top, finding final determination. The Champagne County Zoning Board of Appeals finds that based on the application testimony and the other evidence received in this case, that the requirements for the approval in section nine point one point nine point C have or have not been met. And pursuant to the authority granted by section nine point one point six B of the Champagne County zoning ordinance, the zoning board of appeals of Champagne County determines that the variance requested in case zero zero one dash B dash two one is hereby granted with conditions or denied to petitioners Leon, Michelle, and Brad Ash, DBA Galesville Elevator Company to authorize the following.
I would say that uh it has been granted with conditions. And uh if you want me to read those, I will.
No.
And uh
So, so it
Therefore, everything has been met.
So it has been met.
Yes.
Granted with conditions.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Roll call vote, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes. Mr. Ash, uh both of your cases were approved. Um congratulations. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and I hope to see a huge grain elevator here soon.
Thank you very much, sir.
Susan will be reaching out to you. Okay.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Moving along. I call new case nine nine eight dash S dash two one petitioners. Susan, help me with it with Blake's last name.
Shilb.
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 Blake Shilb, DBA two one seven genetics LLC with officers Stephanie Lasme and John Litchfield. Request authorize an adult use cannabis craft grower as a special use in the Ag One Agriculture Zoning District. Location, a six point zero four acre parcel of land located in the southwest corner of the southwest quarter of section thirty two township eighteen north range nine east of the third principal meridian in Philo Township and commonly known as the former genetic resource seed research facility with an address of six one six zero six county road six hundred north in Philo. The site area is a six point oh four acre and the time of development as soon as possible. Anyone wishing to testify in this case must sign in your complete your complete name into Zoom. By which he solemnly swear that the evidence that you will present will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. This is an administrative case, and such the county allows anyone the opportunity to cross examine any witness. After each witness, I will ask if anyone would like to cross examine, and if you do, please say so, and I will call on you when it is your turn and you can ask your you can ask your questions. For those who cross examine are to add, sorry, those who cross examine are asked to clearly state their name before asking questions. When you do cross examine a witness, please do not give testimony during your cross examination. Also, attorneys who have complied with this with article six point five of the ZBA bylaws are exempt from cross examination. Mr. Schlieb, do you, would you like to give us a little bit of background of your case and your request?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ryan. Yes, good evening. Um finally, we can get to our case.
Could you also state your address as well, sir?
My address?
Please and thank you.
My my address? My home address or this address?
The
The office is fine.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh yeah, so, good evening. I'm Blake Shilb uh for two one seven genetics. Ryan introduced us. I'm also here with one of the officers, John Litchfield, and another one of our officers, Stefan Lasme is also here, um not here, but on the meeting. The address at the office location is sixteen oh six county road six hundred north, and that's in Philo. Six one six four. Background, uh I think everybody on this meeting already knows that uh we are petitioning for an adult use cannabis craft grow facility. The the main point is to advance in the medical field of cannabis. This has been a very touching part in my life, most recently, uh especially the last five years, um having family members go through different fights and being able to witness their fights and how cannabis has affected them in a positive way has enlightened me and also helped me see things clearer and not have such a skewed vision on cannabis. So, yeah, um I think my colleague here, John, would like to say a few things as well. We're going to be open to all questions. We've received plenty of memos and uh we just want to continue to educate everybody and make sure that moving forward, that we can all be on the same page and and have the same ideas and ideologies about it moving forward. That everybody can understand and have a better understanding of the times that we're living in, especially when it comes to cannabis medically.
John, please, John, please state your full name and your address.
John Charles Litchfield, four thirty four Campbell, uh Ransville, Illinois.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so is this like my permission to pretty much just talk about what I want? Is there a certain subject that you want me to hit more this this go around?
Well, uh John, uh as soon as you um tell us a little bit about your case, then I'll open up questions from the board and from staff, so.
Okay, so, yeah, obviously, you know, me and Blake, we, you know, he's been in Europe for fifteen years. He's a professional basketball player. I don't know if that was even clear, but he's been my best friend since third grade and like he talked about his family members and you know, he actually brother passed away four years ago and lost a fight to cancer. And you know, as we're with him at his last days and he, what medical marijuana was the only thing to get him out of bed is make him off uh and put him in a comfort stage where he basically not be moaning almost like and marijuana was the only thing they could do it even in the hospital. And we, and he's want to honor him and I am too. And then it comes, you see people do this and we want to get back to the community doing this, like this wasn't something we don't, he's successful, so am I. We don't need all this money. Like, we want to, we want to do this because for Ty. Am I still connected?
Hey, Jonathan.
Yes.
This is Susan Bergstrom. Y'all are, both you and Blake are kind of cutting out more so now is I don't know if there's something you might be able to adjust on your end.
Um, am I still cutting out?
It's, you sound good for right now.
Okay, maybe I could get a little closer. Does this help? Can you hear me better now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, like I said, um, you know, we, after witnessing what Ty went through, we uh want to go to the we wanted to do this and we want to do a grow facility. We have the the money and the means to do it. He uh has, you know, we're, we want to do this and and we, in our opinion, you know, we're, we're not going to stop until we find a place to do it, but we also if you're willing to let us do it there, we, we want to help. Yeah, I mean, this could be amount of money supplying for the community over the years. It could do a lot of things for it. Through tax revenue and through even just donation. If you did the square footage, what we could possibly get to, the the astronomical and and you know, we could be millions of dollars a month, you know? The thing, we're not, this is not a grow dispensary. I mean, this is not going to make traffic come here. This is a X. The only people that will be coming to this building would be trucks leaving it. Like, you can't come there and purchase anything. It's not going to cause any traffic, you know? And numbers and donations, what we want to do, that's obviously would all depend on the how big it's grow, but it, I mean, full potential, you know, with the square footage there, you guys can fact check this, you know? I mean, five thousand square feet, you know, does one point seven million dollars a year. I mean, in that place is six acres, and even if we got four acres, I mean, there's forty four thousand roughly square feet in an acre. You know, this, I mean, we could get this place up to two hundred, two hundred fifty, two hundred thousand square feet is the max, it'd be two fifteen. And if if we ever got to the max, which we easily could, the donations to the Champagne County, to the the village of Philo, that they could be astronomical. I mean, you could really literally rebuild a whole town on what this place could do. This would be the biggest thing that could possibly ever happen in this town numbers wise. You couldn't, you couldn't bring in another business that could do what this place could do. And you know, as far as we go on, if they were willing to let us, we would start, sign up to donate a percentage of it along with incentives, along with as we grow, the percentages grow. And, you know, we would be willing to
Jonathan?
You know, we
Hey, Jonathan.
You know, yes.
Sorry, um yeah, you were really cutting out that last sentence or so. And I did want to stop you because I have a question about what you said real quick. Um, can you hear me?
Um, just basically the this place, yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, well, my understanding is is that you have a potential greenhouse that would be like a twenty four hundred square feet, forty by sixty? And you were talking about the acreage of the actual uh farmland around it on the six point four oh four acres? And I just want to make sure that we're all under on the same page about what the scope of this special use permit is and that it relates to the statutes of the state of Illinois that has limitations on craft grower square footage. So can you elaborate on that, please?
Yes, the license we're applying for, the, there's three ones you could apply for. And I know I'm I'm pretty close on this, but one's up to five thousand square feet. The one we're applying for is a cultivation center for the craft grower. And that that one is
We're starting with a twenty four hundred square feet green of greenhouse. And right now, we're leaving the land currently in agricultural production.
Blake.
As stated in the background.
You will need to
Yeah.
Uh like, tell us your name before you give testimony, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, sorry, Ryan. Um, I mean, we're just on the same Zoom meeting, that's why, but sorry about that. Yeah, so this, this is Blake again speaking. I'm replying to Susan's uh question as the twenty four hundred square feet greenhouse between the existing and leaving the land currently agricultural production as it's. This, this is what the permit is stating right now. What John was stating was that there's a lot of potential for the land, absolutely.
Yeah, we could go up, if this goes right and with the right people, you know, given this permission, we're allowed to go up to two hundred and ten thousand square feet at the very max potential. And yes, we're not going to apply for, you know, we're going to start small, obviously, but full potential is two hundred and ten thousand square feet of what we could do, absolutely, that is. And, you know, obviously, we have to start somewhere, you know, that's a lot, but I'm, I have a construction background, you know, and all that stuff comes very easily, you know, building buildings and everything, that's, that's something that's, you know, very easily for us to do.
Jonathan, so it's my understanding that a craft grower can have up to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet worth of growing space?
Yes. Two hundred ten, two hundred fifty.
I think that's a cultivation center.
Cultivation center, yes.
But in this case, we're applying for adult use craft grow facility, which has the capability of maximum fourteen thousand square feet.
You're you're cutting out again, Blake. I'm sorry. Um okay, so the current special use permit application, I heard you say fourteen thousand square feet is the maximum allowed by state of Illinois law. And that, that there is a potential for if you were to pursue a craft uh cultivation center, which is another type of uh license through the state of Illinois sometime in the future, that square footage could go up to a lot more closure, over two hundred thousand square feet, but at this time, that is not what you're doing.
Right.
You seeing that correctly?
Right, that's right. We're here tonight, adult use cannabis craft grow facility. That's, that's correct, Susan.
Okay.
Well, we just wanted to make clear on the potential of that either they're going to get behind us on it or they're not, and if everybody was the potential, the potentials and limitless and because, like I said, there, you know, we wanted to that set a certain percentage aside to donate, to help the town and, you know, the village and and all that, and we both already decided that a long time ago.
Understood.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, Tom Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Anderson.
I would like to know what most people do i- in your greenhouse. I- 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 is it, and what the byproduct might be? Um, a- a- are you weeding vegetation? Or are you throwing vegetation away? Are are you throwing it down the toilet? And I, 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 I I'm interested in what what people do that that are working at this place. And um and are there any byproducts?
That, oh, that's a great question, Tom. Um, with the greenhouse um and the waste, the waste will be removed properly. Nowhere near will it be wasted around the area of the agricultural land or around Philo or anywhere where it's not supposed to be. Um, the, with the water, with the water waste, we will recycle it and use it through reverse osmosis um systems. And also, um, I have on my phone, but we're on Zoom on my phone, the dehumidifiers. With with the greenhouse, it's a light depth, uh so you, you get the natural light from the sun rather than having certain LEDs or uh certain other light fixtures that rather than having certain, um, LEDs or, uh, certain other light fixtures that, uh, who I've seen a lot of, um, opposing, uh, oppo- opposing petitioners or, uh, you know, saying that they have an issue with possible lighting being twenty-four hours. It's, it's not that. Uh, in a vegetative state, yes, eighteen to twenty-four hours of lighting, but very dim lighting, but that's indoor. With the greenhouse, uh, you have twelve hours of light and twelve hours of no light in the flowering stage. So, once that's finished, and it's time for the waste product, we will remove it properly. There will be no pollution or contamination nowhere near any of the township or the county unless it's properly placed in a dispos- in a disposal area.
Um, have you already got the disposal area located? And, and then the transportation, as to how you want to get there? And does it create any odors that, that the community might, might inhale?
Okay, this is John Lichfield, I'm, uh, speaking again on this. The answer is no. We are going to do whatever we can to make sure, there, there, there's right ways you could go about, uh, this, so there, no, the town will not smell any odors. And with, as far as the, the laws on the, the waste and everything like that, they're, they're constantly evolving, they're constantly changing. We got, our plan is going to be the, the, the best possible way. We're going to truck the water out, you know, that, that doesn't need to be there and take it to where needs to be fit. We have different options here. Obviously, we haven't looked at like the most efficient yet because we don't know exactly what we're going to be allowed to do. We got to pretty much do what you guys and the state allow us to. But after that, once we go, if we, if you guys say yes, what's going to happen is, that's only half of it. We got to go to the state and then we got to get, uh, present them, and that's when the blueprint and all that'll come. We didn't do that before now because it's a lot of money just to get told no right off the jump. But obviously, you'll see the state's going to be five times as picky as you guys, right? They're going to make us submit the plans, the blueprint, where it's all going. And, and, and they're going to want to know every little detail, it's going to be mandated, mandated very, very strictly, like, there's no hiding these things, like, if you, if you look into it, the state inspectors and everybody, I mean, they're all over this, we got to do what they say. So the answer is, we're going to do whatever we're told to do, like, it, it's not really up to us. They're going to tell us, hey, this is how you guys got to do it, and, and we, we have no problems with that, like, we want to comply with everybody. You know, we did not want to upset anybody. And Philo, as a community, you guys understand that we, we will help this community out tremendously with this money. I mean, and do everything exactly by the book how it's supposed to be.
John, it's Ryan. I do have one question. Um, I believe Blake had testified that the water was going to be recycled via reverse osmosis. And then I believe you just testified that the water, the wastewater was going to be trucked away.
Yeah, yes, here's why. Let me, okay, so recycling, you couldn't truck all this water away, right? But since we're using reverse osmosis, the, 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 like, we got right here, the percentage of water you use is like a lot less, I don't want to say the back percentage, but a lot, lot less because you recycle the same water, leaving little waste. If we didn't use reverse osmosis, there's not a truck big enough in the world to take it, you know, does that make sense? Like, the, the system we're using is, makes it possible for that little bit to be disregarded using reverse osmosis. Yes, Blake is correct, we are using reverse osmosis, and that leaves water waste to a very, very minimal.
Lower than twenty percent.
Lower than twenty percent.
Well, I, how much water, like, how much is twenty percent? Like, how many gallons?
Twenty percent, depends on big, you guys let us go, I guess.
It depends on the canopy space.
Depends on the canopy space that we're actually going to go.
Well, how much are you guys asking for? I, I, I need you to tell me. I, I, I can't tell you.
Hey, hi, Ryan, this is the final as me, I'm the third partner on, uh, in the group. I just would like to just jump in real quick and, um, answer this question.
And please state your address as well, sir.
I'm actually an out-of-state resident, so I, I use the same address as the business.
So, A, please state the address.
Your address will be fine.
Excuse me?
You're muted. Jim, you were muted. What is the address of the facility?
Uh, the address of the facility is, um, crap, I got it wrong.
If you're willing, if you would like to give your home address or the address you're calling from, that would be fine.
Eighteen Joseph, I mean, uh, four zero one Power Boulevard, Richmond, California, nine four eight zero.
Thank you, okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, um, I wanted to say that, um, I went through the same experience in Richmond in California. We were the first, um, cannabis business to come in the city and they had no idea how to treat, uh, the business when it comes to, uh, the waste. And I wanted to touch on what Tom asked earlier. What are the guys doing in the facility? I mean, most of the activities are to get rid of the waste from the plant and get rid of the waste from the, uh, for the water, like the guy said. Usually, from all the towns in, uh, with the California experience, the business go towards those different entities, so we will go towards the waste management. And they usually have programming place and special bins for where food waste, organic waste, or recycling. Usually, the organic waste includes plant, uh, plant waste. So we use those bins as a, uh, we use those bins as most cultivation site we have to have a relationship with the waste management in the town. So we already have a way to come, to have them come and pick it up on site. And, or if there is no, no, there is not, no search system for plant, uh, plant, uh, plant waste removal in the town, usually we can destroy, we can find a, a way to destroy the plant material on site by mixing it with different, uh, uh, by mixing it with different, um, organic material that the town or the county allows to use. When it comes to the waste, uh, of the water and the nutrient in the plant, like my two partners said, it's true that usually, um, that we want to, uh, recycle, recycle the water to minimize the quantity of water, uh, the quantity of water, uh, used for the year. But when it come to the waste for the, the, the food that the plant is eating, most because we are a craft cultivation, we will only use organic material that can be disposed through, uh, that, that can be disposed through, uh, the usual channels, uh, disposing of water. But before we do it, all the chemicals, and if there is any chemical, everything related to the product that we will use will, will be, um, given, the information will be given to the states before they even approve of us getting the license. And it will be approved through people who have done, uh, the research on, uh, on the nutrients used.
So then I, I'll ask my question again. How much is twenty percent? Like, how much wastewater is twenty percent? Or is twenty percent an adequate number for waste?
Twenty percent is the limit that the state of Illinois give.
So, like, we can, we can only match, I, I think when you look at it is because the water is recycled, because the water is recycled,
we wouldn't, uh, it, it would be almost impossible to, to reach the twenty percent because we keep reusing the same water over and over for, for three months at a time for a whole harvest. If we, if, and we, and because we won't, we won't be dumping water for three months and reuse it for the next three months. I mean, I'm not, we're not Matt Genesis, but there is no way to reach the, the twenty percent allowable to be dumped if we reuse, if we reuse the water for six months at a time during the year.
So, how much water, like, how many gallons would be trucked away from the facility at any given time?
I mean, it's going to be hard to give you an exact number now because we don't have the exact number of plants that would be used or the, or the technology that would be, that would be used in the facility. Or how much we haven't calculated, because we need to calculate how much, how much each plant is going to be using in that facility with the environment that's provided and the location in the, and the location. It'd be hard to give an exact number of how much water would be used. We can give it down the line when we close it to get the license because there is certain, there are certain things that have to be, uh, certain number and calculation that have to be deposited in the, in a, in a state level. But at this moment, because it's so early, it's hard to determine what twenty percent in our facility uh, will be, because we don't know, we don't, we, we, we haven't been allowed to grow anything. We don't know how much and how many plants we're going to have.
How many plants will be in the twenty-five hundred square feet that you're asking for today?
That's more question for the, for Jonathan, the grower, but really, it'd be determined really by this, uh, uh, by, uh, the amount of production and the money invested.
If, uh, yeah, if I may speak, uh, Ryan, um, if you want an answer about how many plants uh, could possibly be grown in twenty-four hundred square feet greenhouse, like Steph said, that would be question better suitable for our grower, uh, uh, who is also, uh, in the meeting. Brandon Scott. Uh, you know, he would have a better idea of how many plants we would.
This is John Lichfield. I'd like to speak, I could tell you, the max that we could do is a plant a square foot. So if we did everything and everything was perfect and we maxed it out, it could possibly be twenty-four hundred square plants, but it's not going to be because, you know, I, I, you're asking me a good educated guess, I would say between twenty-one hundred plants, I guess.
And so.
You know, three hundred square.
How much wastewater per one plant over six months' time?
But I could figure that, give me one minute, or unless Brandon Scott, uh, can, wants to step in, then he can. And I, I'll, I'll figure it out real quick.
I'd like to request a five-minute recess, please, if people are willing to.
Do I have a motion for a five-minute recess? Uh, coming back at seven fifty-five, nineteen fifty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Mr., thank you, Mr. Wood, roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Elwell?
Yes, motion carries.
All right, I've got a problem here. And I don't know that you're recording it anywhere this Q and A, and I don't think it is. And I've got people doing a back and forth thing on this Q and A. They kind of have questions, Grant have comments, and so we can't have that. It needs to be in our testimony or it needs to be questioned at the appropriate time, not while you all are flying back and forth with the petitioner. So I need to know what to do with the Q and A, and if I need to announce something verbally so people will stop that, or do you do? We need to figure that out.
But I, I think that needs to be recorded.
We, I don't know.
Or, or like, if, if, can you like?
So all I can do is.
For like, copy and paste it.
All I can do is take a picture of it from here at this point to make sure I get their questions, but they're trying to do a back and forth thing. So we need to make that clear to people so that we stay on track with our meetings.
They are hard to understand.
So, that's, that's what I needed to say. So the Q and As that you have, that's the difference.
At nineteen fifty-six, I call this meeting back to order. I would like to comment on the question and answer aspect to the Zoom. We will need to not use the texting back and forth in the chat. Um, if you have any questions, uh, for the petitioner or any, um. Uh, a person providing testimony, at that point, we will ask you. Um, if you do have any questions and you will be able to ask your questions. And not provide any testimony at that point. So please refrain from using the question and answer portion at the bottom of the, uh, screen.
If I could just add a little bit to that.
Yes, please.
This is Susan Bergstrom and I just wanted to say that, you know, we, we keep an official, uh, record of the meeting. And it's being recorded, but we don't have a way to, um, archive the Q and A part. And so we need everybody to speak up at the appropriate time and verbally. So that we make sure that everything is on the record and we're doing things the right way. So that's why we're asking you to not use the Q and A. And also for those who might raise their hand who want to speak. Uh, in a while here, we're going to open what's called the witness register and that is when we will invite people who want to testify. To say what they'd like to say and ask questions that they have. So until then. It's basically just a back and forth between the board members, staff and the petitioners. So. Just asking for your patience here and, uh, we'll just keep moving on here.
But I also want to make sure that you know that you will have your time to answer your, or to ask your questions. That's important to us. All right. Uh, with that being said, are there any further questions from the board?
Yes, um.
Yes, sir, Mr. Anderson.
Tom, Tom Anderson. Um, I, I'd like to know if any one of the three. That have been discussing this process. Have, have you, any of you worked in the, in the, in the kind of factory that you. That, that you envisioned made a building?
Yes, actually, there's up one, this is John Litchfield. Actually, yes, there's a. Steph has one completely a hundred percent up and running. In Oakland right now, it's already in use, doing great numbers a month. He's the CEO of it. Um, and that's his background. And then, you know, are also our grower. We have a different. Who's been, you know, researching this and been doing, you know, research on this for over twenty years. You know, he has a, a degree and, uh. That, yes, we're, we're very, uh, all of us together are, are very knowledgeable when it comes to the steps.
Have you, have you ever worked in, in a plant?
Me, me personally, no, but he has. Me personally, no, I've never worked in a grow facility factory. No, no, sir.
Who is he?
Death. Lasers.
This, this is Blake Shield. I do as well have. A, a small percentage of equity in the business that is in California as well. So I do. I, I'm there hands-on from time to time, but obviously being a resident from Illinois. We want to be able to bring what we've seen and what we've experienced and what we have grown there. To Illinois and be able to. Have that, uh, here in Illinois, since it's legal now from a medical standpoint. And be able to advance on that, right?
Susan, maybe I missed this, but, um, I, I've heard. Multiple different times where the medical aspect is being, um, presented. Um, how does that equate to the adult use? Or i- is it, are, are we talking about the same thing or?
The medical aspect is a subset of the adult use. I mean, adults in general. Could use this according to the state of Illinois laws, but the medical part of it is a subset of that. So.
This is John Litchfield to answer your question. So I did the research and this is just based off, uh, you know. Five thousand square feet normally would use twenty-four thousand gallons a year. But when we're using reverse osmosis, you know, this is a yearly, not six months. You gotta take twenty percent of that. And like I said, these are, you know, rough estimates. So twenty percent of, uh. You know, twenty-four would, you know, be, you know, around five thousand gallons a year, forty-eight hundred gallons a year. For, for the whole place.
So you're saying, you're saying that you would. Tip have a one-time input of twenty-four thousand gallons, but then it would. Once you start recycling it, then you would have a twen- forty-eight hundred? Could you explain that?
Yes, okay. Throughout the year, it's not a one-time throughout the year. That's much, how much we would. Uh, use, yes. And then after that recycle through, I saw this, it won't be like a one-time thing. It'll be through like a period. And then, you know, after that, it's, it's just twenty percent is the only. Is what gets wasted out of that and the rest gets reused. Does that explain it better?
And that's for five thousand square feet, correct?
Yes, sir. And our main target is the medical aspect of things. Um, that's what we're all about and that's what we like to stick to. The recreational stuff is not something that we want to even get into. We're, we're strictly medical.
You're muted. You're muted. Try it again.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, Blake. Uh, this is Jim Randall. Is, um. There is a difference between the adult use.
Raise your mic, please. That's better.
And your, your, uh, medical marijuana that you would be growing?
Is that a question or a statement?
I'm asking you if, if there is a difference between those plants or are they a different grade or?
Oh, uh, yes, Jim, to answer your question, yes, absolutely. Um. The. It mostly made for medical patients with their purposes in mind. To help with pain relief or nausea or, uh, inflammation. Um, you know, things that, uh, medical patient specifically. Uh, need help with their diet, things like this. So yes, there's a different end degree. Which could be a higher level of THC percentage or, um. Which also can help, help, help these medical patients, this higher greater percentage.
Okay, do you, whatever you're applying for your license from the state. Uh, or do you have to specify what you're going to be doing? Whether it's medical or for the adult use recreation?
Um, yes. You apply for the adult use. When you distribute it to just different distribution. That is when you can decide for how much you get medically or as a grower.
I like to say, oh yeah, when you apply for the state, they want to know, like imagine the details you guys want to know. It's like times. A hundred, like they want to know every little thing you're doing, every little waste product. Uh, how your waste management, they want to know details on everything on the, you know, and, and our target is strict. If it was up to us, we wouldn't do nothing but medical is what we're saying. That's our goal. That's why, why we're doing this. And. And after that, it's their rules.
You, you guys need to do something with your mic because, uh, you, you break up terrible. We can only hear about half of what you say.
Yeah, this is John Litchfield again speaking. I, I know we've had some horrible problems as soon as, as you guys stated. There hasn't been one really smooth go yet. This would be a lot easier in person. We were kind of hoping it was. Um, I, we got a brand new phone, a brand new, uh, iPad here. I, I don't see what we could do any different. That as far as our microphone.
Well, maybe you're just not getting close enough to it because now you're coming through very good. So one other question I have is, do you own this property already?
Uh, yes, Jim, this is Blake Shield and yes, the property is owned already.
Blake, this is, uh, Larry Wood. Uh, with respect to security. Uh, from the drawing that I saw here, it looks like you have, you're planning to have a fence around that area. I don't, I know it's not required by the county, but, uh, and I'm not sure about the state, but is that your intention to have it fenced?
Uh, hello, Larry. Uh, yes, this is Blake Shield. Um, the, the plan is to, yes, uh, comply with the state. Um, again, we're not sure, we weren't sure with the county, but yes, to comply. State regulations if there is need be a fence for security reasons. We already have it.
Any other security that you're planning on providing?
Yes, absolutely. Audio and video. Inside and outside.
Is there going to be any deterrent on top of the fence?
As, as of right now, no, Ryan. There, there will just be a, uh, twenty-foot gate. Um, with the operator and, uh, there will be, or there would be a vinyl cover. Around the chain link fence.
How tall would the fence be?
The fence would be eight foot.
But no razor wire, constantino wire, or anything like that, correct?
No.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I'd feel better a, a, about, about this whole situation. If I saw, um, some data from some other similar in, installation. And, um, one that's been working for a while. And see what they have worked out about the, about the wastewater. And about the, um, storage of equipment and, and a, 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 all kinds of things. Um, I, I, I feel that, that, that these, that, these. People are just getting into it and, and, and I, I don't think they understand. About the. A, a big factory, um, what that's involved. Um, I, I, I'd feel better ab- about, um, having them provide some. Real data from other functioning laboratories like their, their greenhouse would be.
Hi, Tom, this is Stefan here. Um, as my partner was saying, I'm an actual operator and the only operator in the. In the town, in the town of Richmond, in the city of Richmond in California. And I went through the same process, uh, about four times, we four different town. And I can show data and proof of concept with what I have actually going on right now for the town. I mean, for the, for the county when available.
Yes, that, that would be a good one. A good one to, to, uh, inform us about.
For sure.
Yeah, this is John Litchfield. Like I say, it, this is not something, this has already been going, like he's already profitable business. That has, has met all the regulations and has all the data, like it's going to be right there. I thought that was. Kind of understood that this is already going on. It's not like something that we're just going in blind at, like he has a proof of. You know, plans on to do all this. It's been doing it. It's doing very, very well and very, very profitable and we'll, we'll, we'll get those sheets. You know, you know, as soon as possible. I mean, you know, to you guys. So if that, that's would help.
John, it's Ryan. Um, can you talk to us a little bit about, uh, the traffic in and out? Like what type of traffic? Um, like the frequency?
Yes. So here's the thing, there's gonna be, besides the workers, there's gonna be, you can't come here and purchase. You can't, it's an export business. Like we, we, we give it to dispensaries. It's not a dispensary where somebody could knock on the door and. Say, hey, we need this. There's no types of those people. There's no type of people coming there, period. Like this is going to be a, you know. Trucks go out and they deliver it, you know.
So what kind of trucks?
Um, little trucks. Transport trucks. Um, we haven't decided, but these are obviously not big trucks and it's not something that's going to be even. You know, think about how much one, how many pounds one truck could carry. Not gonna be, there's not going to be much traffic at all, man. Please, not much traffic at all. The workers is pretty traffic anybody's ever gonna see.
So are the trucks eighteen-wheelers or are they, you know, like the city vans or, you know, like are, are they a sprinter kind of thing?
A city van. I can't wait till the day we can get up to big trucks, but right now it'd be just like a little city van. You know, that could carry, I mean, multiple, you know, pounds and, you know. Yeah, there's not going to be any big trucks involved as of right.
This is Susan Bergstrom. I have a question about, um, the timing of, of the operations. Are you. Are you going to be consistently like a, a nine-to-five, eight-to-five business during the day only? You going to have multiple shifts? What are your, going to be your operating hours and what days of the week?
Uh, that's a very good question. Um, I believe with state compliances again, I believe it's from sunrise till sunset. So I, I believe it's till about five or six PM and then the facility has to be closed down. Uh, again, I think Stefan, uh, has an idea about that as well. Um, and being at the facility in California, these are the, that are operated there.
Uh, yes, this is Stefan. Um, usually we just adapt to this, uh, the, the CD hours, the regular working hours. Um, nine to five, regardless, the plants only need twelve hours, twelve hours of awake time and twelve hours of sleep. So before three, usually before three to four PM, you don't really need any employees in the facility. You can close by five.
So do I hear you saying that people might be there? In the wee hours of the morning then, if this is on a twelve to twelve, or do you have like some sort of timing for lighting or how does that work?
No, it work, I mean, it works, it works with lighting, uh, with timers. We, uh, everything, we involve technology in everything we do. The lights we turn on with timers, the employees just come to for control, really. Everything will be, uh, um. Done through technology. Including feeding the plants. Um. The most we need the employees to be there for is for the waste as Tom mentioned and for, uh, trimming. But really, uh, most of the stuff in the facility would be, uh, uh, automatic. And, um, by the time the employees come in, the plants already just start, uh, getting fed. Uh, by the time they left, by the, by the time the employees leave, uh, at five PM. Most of the done during, most of the job during day has been done automatically.
Thank you.
Uh, this is, uh, Jim Randall again. So you, you, well, you have, uh. Staff there around the clock, uh, for security purposes at night or is it just, uh, your cameras? Or what, what do you have there for night whenever you're closed down?
Uh, during the day, we have, uh, one security guard just because, just because the, in some of the city. Uh, some of the cities we're dealing with, that demand, uh, that demand, one of the conditions for having a permit in a, in a location is to have security guard. Sometimes we are just, if it's not a requirement, we usually just count the cameras during the day. And I have security guard at night, uh, right about the time the employees leave, we brings a, we have a third-party security companies coming in. Uh, at the gate and, uh, patrolling through the night until, uh, sunup.
This is John Litchfield. I'd like to speak to, you, you know, we, we also want you guys to realize that we will, we want to work with you guys. So. If there's something that you don't like about it, you can, we would at least the option to change it if possible. And this is not, you know, he's talking about Oakland. I mean, could this facility get by with top-grade cameras and motion decisions? Absolutely. It didn't need a security guard all around the clock. Now, if you guys wanted one for some reason, then it could either with this facility this small and this location. There's no real dangerous threats, you know, here and plus technology with the, with cameras, you know, police would be alerted right away. police would be alerted right away. We don't need a security, it's not going to be like that unless you guys wanted it to be.
John, one question that I do have is if we do scale 10 times this size of, I can only assume that they would have to come back for, you know, like, a, a, back before the board, could there be at that point? You know, like, you know, could we require or could we ask for different items that we're not asking for now?
In security you're talking?
Well, right, but.
Absolutely. Can I ask you guys, are you guys with security guards being there or not wanting that? Because, I mean, we could do it either way. I mean, you could look at the newest cameras and technology, you know, motion detector lights. I mean, they'll get, that place would be swarming with cops in two minutes if, if it gets buzzed. So there's no really need to, but there's going to, if we could scale 10 times this size, we could hire eight security guards all year round, all night, if, if that's what it took. And, you know, obviously no matter what, we want to, we want to make the people feel comfortable. This is about like the people around. So we will do whatever they want to make them feel comfortable. The last thing we want to do is make anybody feel uncomfortable where they live or about what they got going on, because all they would ever have to do is ask us. Individual resident matters to us and we would do whatever we could. And that's, and you guys will see that if this goes on.
Any other questions from the board?
How much light pollution is, will be produced at night? Lee Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Yes, hello Lee Roberts. At night, as Stefan said, everything is going to be on timers or in Oakland is on timers. So we're going to run a very popular operational plant. When the plants are flowering, it's 12 hours of light, which is going to take most of the day while the light is out and 12 hours of dark, which during the nighttime would be that period.
Yeah, I understand about the greenhouse, but I'm talking about like perimeter lighting for security, you know, for the cameras to be able to pick up anything at night, you'd have to have some kind of lighting. So would you have spotlights mounted on the fence or pole lights shining on the facility at night to provide some extra security or, and visibility for the cameras?
This is John Lishfield talking, you know, there, I was, you know, we've been researching a lot about the security cameras and stuff. There's, with what they got out there now, there's actually lights with night vision cameras that don't like, okay, if, if it motions, okay, then it lights up, right? If they detect a motion, we would want to get like, obviously as little as possible, right? We don't want to cause, we want to cause a little disturbance, go under the radar as little as possible, but we'd get it so where a motion detectors could to set off all the lights and all the lights turn towards the building, you know, but unless something like that happens, unless somebody's doing some foul play, the lighting is going to be very minimal, you know?
I'm just concerned about the neighbors, you know, having a lot of light shining. I know being out in the country myself, I, you know, I don't like even, even my own light outside. So I, I'm wondering how many night lights you will have.
Here's the thing, we don't have to have any that go all night and, you know, our neighbors, anything that's not a motion detector, I mean, you know, very minimum light, let, put it this way, no matter what business, whatever it is, it's going to be just like when it comes to that. It, no, no more than anything that goes out there and there, and there definitely doesn't have to be big night running lights and, and all our neighbors, we, we have those two, you know, houses across the street. And when it comes to, I've met that guy before, seems like a pretty good guy. And, you know, we would talk with him, we, we wouldn't do anything to disturb him, whatever disturbed him, you know, or any neighbor, we would try to fix immediately unless it's not possible. And, and I don't think there's any situation that would come up that we couldn't handle. Like I said, the last thing we want to do is, is, is bug somebody or, or cause any disturbance. So that we will make sure that, that any resident is more than welcome to come up and say, hey, you know, we, we don't like this. We won't argue with them about it, even if we think the reason is stupid, we'll try to change it. We're here to get along, you know, this is not, I mean, that's, that's what we want to do with, with the community and the people and, and everybody's voice will be heard if they come to us.
Okay, thank you.
Blake, this is Susan Bergstrom again. I have a question about lighting. Earlier on, I'm a real novice about cultivating cannabis. So early on, you mentioned a vegetative, vegetative state and a flowering stage. And in the vegetative state, I thought I heard you say there's 18 to 24 hours of, of lighting. And then during the flowering stage, it's 12 and 12 shifts. So what I'm interested in is the, how much of the time? Let's say per year, if possible, I don't know, would we be seeing the 18 to 24 hours of lighting?
You wouldn't see any of it. We would keep it strictly indoors and we, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't take it to the greenhouse until it was ready to flower.
Okay.
So all, all the vegetative state of the flowering process would be indoors.
So Blake, this is Jim Randall again. So you, is that your intent for that pole barn would be for your, your growing center?
Or? Yeah, yep, we could continue to have canopy space in there as well. And also we have a seed germination room or a, a, a veg room in the office building as well.
So you don't need that pole building to grow plants in then?
At this moment, not necessarily, but if we granted more canopy space, yes.
So what would your purpose, what would you be using that building for then?
Uh, well, we would use it once we were approved for more canopy space.
Otherwise, it would just be sitting there vacant?
Uh, yeah, unless they decided to, unless the state licensed us enough canopy space to use that.
Sir, this is John Lishfield. So I do, I do construction, you know, and I got an excavator and a dumpster and stuff. And that shop is, was what I use to, to run my construction business out of now. You know, I'm in and out of there during the day, but you know, to answer everybody's questions, yeah, you're never going to drive past there at midnight. Place lit up like a Christmas tree, like it's not going to happen, you know, we're going to chill, it'll just be a regular place. And, and we're going to keep it that way and we know we could do that.
So you're currently using that pole barn as a business?
I mean, I've been running work in the union for a long time and I'm just starting my own business, yes. I got it full of a mini excavator and equipment and tools and I've been absolutely, yep. But it's not, I'm just getting started. Like this is my first year going out on my own. I'm a, I'm a union guy that used to run projects, now I don't.
Thank you. Blake, who is your end customer?
Who is my end customer?
Yes.
Uh, the end customer for the facility would be ultimately different dispensaries throughout Illinois.
So it, it's not an interstate type business, like everything is inside the state, of course, correct?
Yes, correct.
Also, going back to the water, are you going to be trucking the water in or do you have a well? Or like, how do you plan on supplying the 25,000 gallons of water?
We have a well, yes.
Okay, sir, let me ask you, this is John Lishfield. Whatever way that you would want us to, we don't want that to stop it. Like any way you want us to do it, we'll do. Want to truck it in there, we'll truck it in there. We don't want to make definite decisions like that because we don't know where you guys stand on it, because we want to work with you guys, if at all possible, unless it, you know. So if you guys want it done a certain way, we're going to do it a certain way. When the, when the stuff like this, there's money and enough money involved to do what we want to do with it, you know, to do, take extreme measures if we need to.
Have you had any business check out the capacity of your well and the impacts it might have, whether it can handle the demand that you're talking about?
Um, our well, now, we didn't give them the exact ga, our wells look good from what, you know, the guy said, we didn't give them the exact amount. Um, but he said it's a good-looking well and like, you know, don't seem to be no problems. You know, I don't know what that means. I don't know enough about it. I hate to talk about things that I don't know. But, you know, whatever regulations need to be done to, to make it work, we're, we're willing to do, so.
John, would it be important for you to make sure that the draw that your, that 25,000 or 24,000 gallons, that that wouldn't affect neighbors?
Absolutely. That's our whole goal. And like I said, me or Blake, we wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't sit right with me if I was bothering one person. Like it wouldn't sit right with Blake either out of the hundreds. Like if there was one person mad, I would, I would simply try to do what we could to, to make them feel good about. Last person, you know, every person matters in something like this, us.
Uh, this is Stefan Lasmid, wanted to ask, touch back, touch back on the water too. I wanted to talk to Ryan, just to mention the part or commencement of the operation. In every facility we deal so far, annually, all cultivation operations to meet the detailed plans demonstrating straight water conservation methods. You know, all that would be instituted and maintained at all time. And all this planning will include records of monthly water consumption. And that would demonstrate that the cultivation facility would be equipped with water collection and filtration system to reduce irrigation water to the maximum.
Thank you.
This question would be for John Hall. I don't want to get confused with the other John. At this point in time, they would not need a loading berth?
They have a concrete space sufficient for loading berth.
Because I didn't see it on the plan, but I read about a berth in the.
Right, yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of, I think that they need to provide a better site plan than, we had a site plan provided that was an old lumber site plan for the buildings for a previous owner. Based on that, I put together that annotated aerial in the packet that shows things kind of actually where they are. But we need the petitioners to provide that, to provide more details like that loading berth aspect and lighting and whatever possible that shows, you know, exactly how things are, would be on the ground.
This is John Lishfield, I'd like to ask, we, is there any way, like I said, we want to do this how you guys want. We don't want to, the last thing I want to do is like submit plans, hey, it has to be done this way. Oh, well, we don't like it done this way, so we're not going to approve you. When nine out of 10 things can all be adjusted always, most of them, you know? I haven't ran into something that, I'm sure there's some things that can't, but I haven't ran into it yet. And we just want everybody to know that we will adjust what we have to adjust. And the best way to do this is obviously you guys are going to know what suits your county and your village better. And, and we want to do it that way if at all possible. You know, using LEDs, huge breakthrough in technology. They use a lot less power than the lucentinics, you know? One LED light, they're very expensive. And yes, we will be using LEDs, top-of-the-line lights to buy for energy, you know, reduction. And if, and we're also looking into possibly solar, you know, put some solar fire panels, if that would be worth it, if that would be, you know, worth anybody's while, if that would help us in any way. We would do, we'd be interested open in to doing that too. I mean, they're not that hard to install, you know?
I, I, I think that you need to get with an engineer and give us some detailed plans for all of this. If you want to put in solar, that's up to you, but you need to put that in your plan. Say that this is what we're going to do and so that you're not coming back repeatedly to make changes. So solar would be nice, but if you want to do that, you need to put it in the plans that you give us. And they need to be approved by an engineer.
Absolutely. And I agree with you, you know, the reason why we didn't do that yet is obviously that happened anyways, because the state requires it. We were just kind of like, you know, wondering what else is going to stop us, because you go spend $15,000 on a blueprint just to be told, hey, nope, we can't do this in this county anyways. Like that's something we were trying to stay away from, you know, just a gamble like that. So if you, you guys want to do it, that's fine. I would ask like, if the blueprint turns out the way you guys want it, is there anything else that could stop this? Like what's the chances of us going to do all this and then you guys saying, well, hey, thanks? But we're not going to let you do it here anyways for, for this reason. Like if at all possible, you know, we'd like to stay away from a situation like that.
This is, this is Jim Randall again, and I would tell you that at this stage in the game, until you can give us some facts, figures, spend some money on an engineer, that's the way it is. And until you can do that, there's no way in the world you're going to get approved to do anything.
Well, we can do that. We absolutely will. So you guys want an engineer, the, or architect to, to draw a site plan and, and draw up everything, right? As architect, the same, I got an architect that I work with for my construction project. And yeah, would that be sufficient enough? Just an architect with new drawings? Now, in these drawings, you guys want, I mean, you guys want every little detail about it, like how we're growing, the irrigation, like down to the, down to the wire, right?
Well, John, for me, this is our first case and this will be referenced going forward. If there's any other, there is a lot of reverb. Can you guys mute? On mute. So, sorry. This is our first case and going forward, this is going to be referenced like with future growers and future craft growers kind of thing, cases. My concern is when we ask a question, the immediate response is, oh yeah, we can do that. That's a little concerning for me. You know, like honestly, I would rather have you to come to us to say, this is where we're going to get our water. If that's, you know, like we're going to get it from our well. If that doesn't work, if there's too much impact on my neighbors, then we're going to have the Culligan man to truck in the, you know, like the, the water. Or with the power or with the lighting or with the security. You know, like this is what we're going to do. If you want more, this is our recommendation. And I, I honestly, from this conversation, I, I greatly appreciate you guys spending your time this evening. But what I have heard is any type of question that we have has been, yeah, we can do that, or whatever our neighbors think, or you know, like that I, I get the sincerity that, that you want to be good neighbors and that you want to infuse, you know, like, like capital into the community kind of thing. like capital in, into the community kind of thing. But I see that there's, eh, there's really not a plan to give to us. Or I'm not seeing that, um, in that dialogue tonight, I guess. So I, I, I too, I, I agree with Mr. Randall that there needs to be point by point. This is exactly what we're going to do. You know, like, like a business plan kind of thing, instead of just, hey, we wanna grow some pot. We want to, you know, like have it medical stuff so that we can help our, you know, like our fellow man kind of thing. Uh, it, to me, that's not cutting it tonight.
Uh, hi, Ryan, it's Stefan Lism again. Uh, I totally agree with you that tonight, was, wasn't, uh, something, uh, it didn't, it didn't go as expected in a sense that you, there was no plan that was showed, that was, uh, showed to you. But, uh, the expression on the phone call was, uh, we didn't expect much from phone call as my understanding is that the county, the county is not, the county or the neighbors are not as well educated by the cannabis industry as they should. Or they can, and it has nothing to do with anybody, but just affected where we are in life. Like, but when it comes to starting a cannabis business, I can assure you that we know what we're doing. Like, um, when we, if, uh, if and when we have a next meeting for this, uh, for this matter, it's basically, um, having an agreement between both parties. And we have, we will have a plan for, uh, a, a plan for, uh, energy conservation. A plan for, uh, a security plan, we'll have it. It's just, we, uh, we will have a plan for waste, uh, uh, water conservation, like I said, a plan for wastewater. A plan, even a plan for prevent, to prevent mold, a ventilation plan, or air mitigation plan, and even what we plan to do with unsold product. Like, we would have a detailed inventory plan. I mean, these are things that we're used to dealing with. But it's just, we have to, I mean, we, uh, we had to get a personal understanding of where the board and the county is when it comes to cannabis. We will get there. We wanna make an agreement with the town and understand that you think that we, uh, we sound like a whole bunch of yes people who just wanna tell you what you wanna hear. But it's just, it's, this is, these are, those are things that we, uh, that we dealt with. There's nothing, uh, there is nothing new, there is nothing new here. And those are concerns that were growing in other cities and towns, other county that are, that were against cannabis. And learn to grow, uh, learn to understand what it is about. And that we can find the ways, because the rules are already in place. Through, uh, cause, uh, we already have inspect, inspection going in the county when it comes to construction. When it comes to construct, building a cannabis facility, it's the same inspections that you have to go through. There's nothing that, it's not a special inspection just for cannabis. The only special inspection will be from the state. But when it comes to construction and building and, well, conservation, all these entities are already in place in the counties. It's just on us doing our homework and our due diligence and going towards those entity and starting the conversation. And I think by the time we get to our second meeting, if there is one, and if you allow us to talk to you, uh, we'll have those things ready for you and planned.
Thank you.
Okay, this is John Lish, I just wanna say one more thing. See, I, I, you, this was like a maybe a little lapse of communication. Yes, like he said, this, this is something that's already going on, this already happened. I just wanted to show my willingness to work with the neighbors and, and stuff like that. I didn't wanna come in here and think, hey, we're gonna tell you guys, if that's what you want, I'm very clear on that now. I wasn't at first. I didn't wanna come around and start like telling you guys how we're gonna do something in your town, in your village, and that's the reason why I treaded that lightly. It's not because I just didn't have a plan or a clue about like, something's already going on. I just, my willingness to work with you guys, that's all. But we could get all the documentation and all the plans you guys need.
Okay, uh, this is Jim Randall again. One other thing that, that, do you have another facility that you keep talking about that is comparable to what you're wanting to do size wise here?
The one that's already going, um, that'd be a good question for Steph on the exact how square foot it is, but it's, it's, it's bigger than this one.
Well, here, here's, my thinking is also, none of us know what it is that you're talking about. So if you could provide us with photos, some dimensions or whatever from another facility, so that we know what it is we're looking at, uh, that would help a lot also.
Absolutely. We'll get all the photos and from, even though as much as we're allowed to, you know, inside the facility and all, all the photos and all the whole plan, you know, whatever you guys want.
That will help a lot. Thank you.
It is, um, Ryan, is, is there someone from the community in attendance that wants to chime into this conversation?
There are, Mr. Anderson, and I was, um, going to ask if there was any other questions from the board or staff before I was going to turn over to Ms. Bergstrom, the list that she has compiled. So if there's no other questions from staff or from the board right now. John?
Yes, um, on the site plan, you show the security gate. It appears to be more or less right at the road. I'm wondering how it is that traffic queues up for that gate to open? Can they pull off the road completely before the gate is open? How's that supposed to work?
Yes, um, well, there's actually, it's been, it, there's a gap. There's room to pull in on our property before you get to the gate. It's not right by the road. There's actually, it's back off the road. I don't know the exact feet, but it's, it's for that reason.
Okay, because, uh, the, on the aerial photo here, it appears to be less than twenty feet. And, you know, most vehicles are at least twenty feet long, so.
We actually had, uh, we actually had the gate, if you look at the aerial view, um, we actually had the gate now going, you can see the genetic sign that's still there now. It's actually, um, on the other side of it, closest to the building.
Okay.
For that reason.
Okay, good. And secondly, I, I'm still not clear on whether there will be lighting used in the greenhouse at night. Our ordinance requires no nightlight to be released from the greenhouse. And I wasn't clear that, that you understood that. Is, is that news to you? Is that gonna be a problem?
No, no, there's no lighting, no lighting, no lighting. Oh, visible, if, on the very few times, like in the building that there's a light on at night, it will not be visible once you drive by there. And no, so there's no, no lighting, no extra lights at night, no lighting period that needs to be on at night like that.
So there'll never be lighting in the greenhouse at night?
Never, never.
Thank you.
Not seeing any more questions from staff or board. Susan, uh, would you like to call for cross examination?
To which witness? I mean, okay, let me start over. So we can do cross examination of all the witnesses who have talked so far, which would be Blake, Stefan and John Litchfield. And there are approximately fifty people in attendance. So what I'm asking right now of those fifty people in attendance is if anyone has questions about what those three petitioners testified about during tonight's meeting. If you have questions or comments that don't relate to what they have testified about tonight, that's gonna come up here in just a little bit after a cross examine. So what I would like to see at this point is if there's anyone who wants to ask questions specific to the testimony received tonight, go ahead and, um, hit the raise hand button that should be along the bottom of your screen. And that is pretty much, without having video view, that's pretty much the way that I'm able to see what, who wants to ask questions. Yeah, it's lighting up here. All right. So I've got so far nine people who have cross examined supposedly. So, um, I will start with Thaddeus Bates. So Thaddeus, we're gonna ask you to just, you know, give your name, you speaking it, and, uh, ask your question of a certain petitioner about testimony that they have given tonight only.
For sure. Thank you. Uh, I just do have a quick statement that I wanna thank the zoning board. Been, this is my first trip through anything and, um, I'm trying to understand it as we go. And the document flow has been great. The communication has been great, so that has not gone unnoticed and, uh, it's much, much appreciated. Where to start?
Well, what, what question do you have specific to the testimony that the petitioners have given tonight? Because we do have later on the opportunity for actually providing your own comments.
Okay, so I guess the first question, uh, just to confirm, there will be no security lighting? This is for John, uh, John Litchfield, I'm sorry. From your testimony, there'll be no security lighting overnight and there'll be no greenhouse lighting overnight. So I can expect to see what I'm looking out my window to see right now, since this is three hundred foot away. I don't see any lights currently.
Yes, that's, that's absolutely correct. Now, let's say the only stipulation of that would be, let's say somebody did try to break in there, right? Then there would be motion detectors, spotlights that turn on and shine them on that person, the security system we're looking at. But only if somebody's trying to break in, would there be lights that turn on like that? Which I don't think that's ever gonna happen hopefully, and at the most, a couple of times a year, maybe somebody around, you know? I mean, so.
That's, uh, that's my top concern right now. Um, I'm gonna, I, I know that you said there's quite a few people with hands up. I'm gonna, um, share the time as much as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Susan?
Okay, um, Justin Lear Camp.
Justin Lear Camp here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Um, I do have two questions and I'll also try to be brief. Uh, the first one is for Blake. Uh, you spoke of your experiences with cannabis, helping, um, family members with medical, medical conditions and, uh, a desire to produce this product for medical reasons. I, I believe you also said, and I'd like clarification on, that you will only sell this into the medical market, not into the adult use, um, cannabis recreational market? Uh, is that your intent to only sell medical?
Yes, Justin. Um, like I said, my, my, uh, my story and my past with medical cannabis, has touched me very deeply and since the advancements are continuing to move forward, we wanna be a part of that, uh, at two one seven genetics. And we definitely want to be able to help, uh, future patients and anybody involved, with the medical field and advancements of cannabis. That's correct.
Okay, th- thank you, Blake. Uh, my second question was for John Litchfield. Uh, when you spoke of the security systems and the cameras available, you made a comment that, um, some of these security systems are so advanced that, uh, cops could be all over the place in two minutes. I don't know, um, I guess my question is, have you ever called the sheriff's office from rural Champaign County or not? And this is not a knock on our sheriff's office. They do a fantastic job. But I've awaited twenty-five minutes for an officer to respond in an emergency situation. There is simply not that level of staffing in rural Champaign County. And, uh, I guess my question is how you, uh, e- expect the sheriff's department to have such quick response uh, to something when they're over, understaffed and overwhelmed with the current call volume?
Okay, so here's my thing. Yes, maybe I, so did I, I didn't realize I said, put the best minute. But there's basically the, the security system that I'm looking at can detect motion way before it even gets, you know, penetrates. So, and then things would be alerted, our, we could look at our cameras, you know, at right away. Okay, this is somebody, or it's nothing, right hooked up the cell phones. And if the cops need to be, to spin out there, even if it's, I mean, we don't need any, we don't need security guards that, that we're happy, we'd be comfortable with. I mean, this is not like, it's not like something you just go rob a vault. For somebody to come do some serious damage here, they would, it would, it'd be, it would take a while to get, to get any value out of there. And if by that time, I mean, that's all the response time we need. And, you know, the, the security cameras that we're gonna use, you know, like I said, it's gonna be, they're not gonna need any light and they're gonna be motion detected and, and the only time any of it's gonna get disturbed is if somebody is actually, you know, doing some foul play. And as long as they're there, I mean, if they were there within twenty minutes, we'd be super happy with that. I mean, even twenty-five, and I know you said that one time, uh, twenty-five minutes, I, I'm sure that probably has happened. I'm also pretty sure if I went out there right now and I called the cops ten times in a row, that eight or nine out of ten, it'd be less than fifteen minutes.
And just to chime in on that, uh, Dustin, uh, with, there is a possibility we could have a security onsite as well. So, uh, we could possibly hire a security for the staff as well.
But we're gonna try to stay away from that. We don't think we need it. So.
Okay, Justin, do you have any other questions about their testimony?
I'll, I'll go ahead and share the time as well. Thank you, Susan.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lear Camp. Susan?
Roger and Diane Henning.
Hello, this is Roger and Diane Henning. And I got a couple of questions, uh, to John. You guys were talking earlier about your plant needed eighteen hours of light sometimes? And, but you're gonna grow this in a greenhouse and we're not gonna get any light protruding from the greenhouse? Did I understand that correctly?
You understand, no, you don't understand it correctly. A greenhouse is not for that stage, that the stages that, um, we would need that for are something that's gonna be indoor completely. You won't be able to see a shade of light. For what's gonna be in the greenhouse is gonna be the sun and the, the, during the day light. That's not gonna be, there's nothing ever gonna be in the greenhouse that requires that cycle of lighting. That's only for, you know, a completely enclosed building.
Okay. And on your perimeter lighting, you're saying you're not gonna have any, but you're gonna have motion sensors? Out here in the country, we have a lot of animals. Are these things not gonna go off when the animals come around?
Nope, they could actually tell the difference. They, they could actually tell the difference between an animal and a human. You could, you could look at these, the new advancements they got, security cameras. I got cameras out there now. They can tell the difference between a possum and, and that, those are not even the ones that we're getting, the, the finalized ones, the perimeter, but no, absolutely not. And if it does, like I said, the first thing that happens is, you know, we look on our phone, we look on our camera. You know, we're gonna see, I, we'll have twenty-four hours, seven days a week, live coverage of it, you know, more than multiple people. So, you know, we'll be able to see right away before disturbance is called out there. I'm sure the first thing that, you know, we're gonna set it up to, you know, where we get a call first, hey, you know what? This was just this, or, or hey, yeah, there's somebody out there, go out there. I just don't see, if, if, if I'm gonna estimate, I don't see anything more than maybe a time or two a year where something gets falsely triggered.
Okay, um, I drive by there in the mornings quite a bit and it's dark when I leave right now. Um, there's lights on in the shed that we can see through the skylights now. I mean, what, what's going on in there now that we have lights in the shed now?
Actually, um, I'm glad that you said that, because my guys that work for me must have not have turned off the light when he was out there. And I appreciate you saying that because. And I appreciate you saying that, because that just, honestly, is just wasting us money. With that, that was a mistake. I, I, I've been doing construction, you know, and I got that shop. It's, it has a mini excavator in it, a job shovel tool, stamping concrete and building concrete benches and stuff. That's what's been going on out there now. So.
Okay, well, I'll let somebody else ask a question now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Henning.
Susan?
Let's see, Charlie Mitstarfer.
Hello, thanks for your time, Charlie Mitstarfer. I had a couple of questions, if I may ask them. So you mentioned just before, this is for John again, you mentioned the, the fact that you don't need supplemental lighting in the greenhouse. So will there be any supplemental lighting installed in that greenhouse? I'm just curious. It's totally.
No.
Okay, and then also, just mentioning before about security, I got just a couple of things I want to ask you about that. You mentioned you thought there might be the need for a couple incidents per year, maybe a couple break-in attempts. I don't know about you, but down here, that's, that's a lot. A couple in 10 years is a lot. So I don't know if that just is a, a relative difference in experience, but most of the folks in this neighborhood, two times tend to break in, especially across the street. For your immediate neighbors there, it'd be pretty much of a concern.
If I, if I was, if I was to bet, listen, I always try to prepare for the worst. And I'm not like trying to sit here and gaslight everybody or say, oh yeah, everything's going to be perfect. But if I was going to bet my money, I don't think there will be one ever. With today's technology, I mean, you're not getting away with that. It would take you hours to come in there with a big truck. Are they going to break in with a semi-load to get everything out? Because that's what they would have to do, get any real value. It's just, it's not something that's going to happen in that area especially. I don't think there'll be a break-in attempt in 30 years. But I just didn't want to, you know, when I answer these questions, obviously, I can't predict the future. So I just want to say worst, worst, worst-case scenario, and, and that's what I did there. But personal opinion, I don't think it'll ever happen.
Okay, I appreciate that. So you think your deterrence will be good enough?
Absolutely. I think when somebody's doing something, and they're there, and four spotlights shine on them, I think a normal person would stop what they're doing and leave.
Okay, and so that, that security you mentioned, though, how intrusive is that? Is the neighbor across the road, is I going to be recording every time he goes outside and plays ball with his kid? Is he going to pick that up? Is it going to be taking video of his family life right across the street and audio? I'm just curious. I don't know much about these security systems.
No, absolutely not. He won't even know it's there. And there won't, no, absolutely not. There'll be no video cameras on his house or, or anything like that. It's just our perimeter. That, that, that's it. And, you know, he's not, no, that security system, I mean, if you guys, there seem to be a lot of questions about that. But if you, if you get on Amazon, there's probably 40 new that, that you should see all the details that these new security systems do. I mean, they could literally tell the difference between a dog and a cat. I mean, it's crazy.
But you do intend to patrol your entire perimeter, which does come very close to his residence?
We, we will have a motion, motion detector that detects motion. And if, if it does detect motion from a human being, then lights will shine on them. That's the first step. And then our phones will get alerted, hey, look what's under this light, and then we'll see it, okay? Does it need to go to step two? If not, well, it'll, you know, right back. But no, animals, the only thing that could set this off is a human being, and that's the motion detector.
And John, that's my point. There are going to be human beings on the perimeter across the road. And I don't think that, I don't, hold on, please. I just don't think that, I know I wouldn't want to be living on a, you know, reality TV show 24/7 just because I happen to walk by a motion detector. But that's just a comment I wanted to make. I appreciate you explaining the rest of it to me. My last question I had, if it's okay to ask, another one is for you also, John. I'd really like to hear you explain to me the reverse osmosis process for this water in your own words. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm not the grower, obviously. I, I, I do what I do. I'm not the grower. But there, there's basically, it's a filter system. They, they have all these filters that it goes through, and it filters the water out, and it reuses it. And am I an expert on that part? No, but the, the person that be growing for us is. He's just more of a shy person, you know, that, but he very well knows this stuff. And there's filters on him, you know, that can be replaced every six months to a year, and that's all it is, you know?
Okay, I appreciate it, John. Thank you for enlightening us. I appreciate you taking the time to answer my questions. Thank you to the board, and I'll pass the torch here to the next person.
Thank you, Mr. Mitstarfer. Susan?
Molly Kelly.
Good evening. I have a quick question for John. In your earlier statement, you said that this is not going to be a dispensary. That wasn't in your plans for now. But what guarantees do we, as members of this community, have in place that this won't occur in the future? This is a, this is a really hot button for this community.
Absolutely, and you know, we knew that going in, and we have no plans. First of all, you know, we want to do, the dispensaries is not something that we're after. We're not after all that traffic. We, you know, a cell, that's just not something we're interested in, period. And I could guarantee you, we won't even try to do, we have no business trying to do that. Even if we did, if we would have to bring that, we could sign, we'd have to bring that up in front of the board before we could do it. And obviously, we wouldn't even try to get them to vote that yet. I would have never even asked a town like that to have a dispensary in it and, and create all that unwanted traffic. I wouldn't want that in my town either.
Mr. Hall, would you be able to give Ms. Kelly some reassurance on like the dispensary and like what's the, like the, the difference in, in the zoning would be?
Well, in order to establish a dispensary, there would have to be a zoning change. Zoning to a B4 district, which would be unusual at that location, but there's no law prohibiting it. I, I would note that the landowner to the south has enough franchise to, if he protested that rezoning, that would trigger the supermajority requirement for the county board, which makes a rezoning very difficult. But there's no guarantees. But if it were proposed, it would be a, a very unlikely venture, but, you know, there's no guarantees.
Okay, thank you very much.
Molly, do you have any other questions for the testimony?
Nope, that's perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Susan?
Ron Estes.
Mr. Estes?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we, he sure came, Mr. Estes.
Thank you. This is Ron Estes. Thank you for taking the time to answer our questions. I know that the greenhouse and the lights have been a hot topic, and you stated that there would not be lights in the greenhouse. I actually manage a research facility that has a greenhouse with lighting. I know how much light that it emits. I guess my question would be, and I know you're not the grower, this could be for, for John or for Blake, but what is the light requirements for marijuana in the greenhouse? And will you have to supplement that? Do you know that for certain? Because the day length in Illinois in the winter is relatively short. So if this is going to be a year-round facility, you're going to need to account for that.
Yeah, see, so we're, most of our growing, what we're shooting for is indoor, right? What that shed has out there. That greenhouse is not, no, we're not going to, there's not going to be any lights at night. There's not, you know, there's, there's just not going to be. Especially now, we're going to really make sure of that, because we know that that's the same thing. But we're, we're, before this, our target is that shed is completely closed off. I, I know they got those window wells at the top of it, but you know, those could be covered up. That would be the only light you would ever be able to see if we didn't cover the stuff. But we are going to do that. We don't want any light. Obviously, the guy across the street, you know, we want to respect his deal, and he understands, he don't want to look at a Christmas tree all year round. And we, we are fully, fully aware of that, you know? So we don't, I mean, we got enough square footage in that shed. You know, that's 2,400 square foot right there. I mean, the greenhouse, there is no greenhouse yet. You know, there is no greenhouse yet. We, we got a shed to grow indoor. That's all we have. The greenhouse hasn't even been built yet. That's just future plans down the road. But even hearing it, it's making me not even, like, we would build another shed where, you know, a building to keep it inside, no light at night. Like, we, we understand that, and that's not something that we're going to alert.
One more question. Going back to the, the water filtration system and the water usage at this facility. You mentioned that you're going to use reverse osmosis to filter the water out, which I'm familiar with. We actually use a similar system in our greenhouse, but that is coming from well water to basically purify the water that we're giving to the plants. Is this going to be, I guess my first question is, is this going to be a hydroponic facility?
No, see, no, hydroponic, nope, it's a, it's still, there's two different, there's a couple of different ways to do it, but we're not doing a hydroponic facility. That was a whole different.
So i- in my experience, then, the, the water filtration that you're talking about, you're not going to be able to filter that out of the soil that you're watering into. That's going to go into some sort of a drain system and create wastewater. Not saying it would be impossible to filter that, but a, a reverse osmosis system wouldn't necessarily be the, the right tool for that. So I'm just wondering what kind of plan you have for that wastewater?
Hi, Ron, this is Stefan here. Just wanted to clarify for, for John. When use, when in fact we use the reverse osmosis, we, we'll be, we'll have water intake system in place. By that, I mean, we will, we will, we will try to recover the water from, directly from the plant. So you were right when you meant, when, uh, when you asked the question, if we're going to use hydroponics, we will in fact use the products eventually. And that'd be the, the most efficient, the most efficient way to, to get the water back so we can recycle it and get rid of all the, the, the cellulose, dissolved salt in the water and all the impurities from bacteria.
I believe you'd also have to worry about any sort of soil amendments that you'd put in, anything to control soilborne diseases.
Mr. Estes, they did not, they did not testify for any soil.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I have to answer real quick, we won't be using the soil, we use, we'll use pot, pots. And we won't be using any soil from the location. Most of the soil that we use for hydroponic will be bought from stores.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to understand how this is, how the filtration system is going to work. You know, working in a greenhouse myself, managing a facility with a greenhouse, I can't quite wrap my head around how plants grown in soil from the field or from, you know, potting soil, how you would filter that, so.
So the pot, I can, I mean, I can explain real quick, the pot will be, the pot will be, we'll put the pots, the plants in pots. Pot will be on tables, and the tables will be part of the whole hydroponic system. So when the water, the water get out of the plants, it'll get recovered by the table that it puts on, that they're placed on. And on the table, it'll be direct, direct dumping to tanks that we have plugged into the tables. Does that make sense?
Yes. So how will you filter the water that comes off of those tables?
Because we, we capture the water out of the tables. The tables will have, we recapture the water from the tables.
But what will be done with that water?
That's the water that we, I mean, the water, once we, once we recover the water from the plant, we measure it to see how much nutrients will be taken from the plants. We direct the same water into the tanks and adjust the pH and the nutrients, the nutrients, the nutrients in that water. And we're bringing back again to the different room or different plants. That's how we recycle it would work. It's not really bringing it back to the reverse of motive. After the plants are, as, will be fed, we'll just bring the, the water back in the tanks and just adjust the nutrients and the pH.
Okay.
Was that all your questions, Mr. Estes?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. Susan? You're muted.
CJ and Courtney Decker.
Yes, hello.
Do you have questions for the petitioners at this point?
Yeah, so first I'd like to thank everybody for joining in here tonight. First question I have, you mentioned that you, you said that you want to only sell or grow medically, medical marijuana. Can you guarantee that's how it will only be sold through a dispensary and not for recreation?
I could guarantee you that when we sell it, it's for the medical, and that's what we're selling to, and that's what it's for. Now, what they do with it, if they, if they weren't being honest with us or something, that would be one thing. But yes, I could guarantee that's all we're selling, and that's all we're doing for medical-grade marijuana to dispensaries. That's all we're aimed at, and that's all we want to do.
Okay, my next question is, you stated that your plan was to help the community, work with the community, you know, infuse dollars into the community and whatnot. Why did you not make any of your plans known to anyone in the community and the nearby neighbors before tonight?
Honestly, we looked at this, and the zoning for the state, it was already a done deal as far as the requirements, what requires, the whole reason for this meeting tonight is because the, the neighbors, you know, you got to realize that the special use permit is because of the neighbors across the street within 300 feet. We didn't realize that we were going to need a special use permit because it's in the state zoning. It, it, it complies with all of it in the state zoning.
Okay, I understand that. I just, I guess I just wanted to know why you haven't talked with any of the neighbors yet, just to, just to be good neighbors and let them know what's, kind of what is actually going on?
Honestly, I, I mean, I, I really haven't had a platform to do that. He's came over and talked to me, Thaddeus has. He's came over there, and I said, hey, come over anytime. The bar, Mr. Daly stopped by, the owner of the bar, the other day. I waved him in, he came in, he came and talked to us for a while. I said, hey, come on in anytime, you know? I haven't really had a platform to reach out, but, you know, I'm a pretty well-known guy, so is Blake. We both coach kids, you know, and that's what we do. And I, I figured that any, I mean, I, I guess I really didn't know, know how to have a platform for that. I'm, I'm, tonight's the first time we have. But like I said, there's been two guys that stopped by, and they get treated with all due respect, get invited in, and tell them what we're doing. And we didn't know, you know, we don't want to open up our mouth about things until we know if it's going to be allowed or not. Like, I don't want to hype up anybody about something that's going to fail. You know, we're just kind of waiting to, to see, you know, we know there's going to be a lot of hoops. And, and, you know, it's, this is just the start of them. And, you know, we were just kind of waiting till it's more, you know, that we're going to be allowed to do this, I guess.
Okay, I have one final question. Multiple times you've mentioned the grower that is going to grow for you in this spot. Who is this person?
His name is Brandon Scott. He's on here right now. He could speak if he could hear me.
Is this a local gentleman? How much experience does he have with, with this? We'd like to know a little bit about him.
He's, uh, I, I, he has very, a lot of experience with this. I don't want to say his full credentials. Um, I, I wa- I don't want to say, I don't know exactly, um, his full credentials, but like I said, also Steph, you know, he has, I don't know how many growers that work at his facility active right now that, I mean, like I said, that business in Oakland is doing very, very well already, you know? Um, so I don't know, like, exactly, I guess I, yeah, I can't really speak for, I'm not a grower and I, I try not to talk about things unless I know. And I guess I don't know what his exact credentials are. But they, but he's very good. I could guarantee you that. We're willing to bet our, our life investment on it, you know, that he's gonna do a great job. That's how confident we are on it.
I just want to jump in with the housekeeping thing. We're at, uh, nine eighteen by my clock and at nine thirty, we either have, we have to have a motion to continue or whatever the board decides to do tonight. Just give you a ten-minute warning, kind of. So are there any other more questions from you?
Uh.
The Deckers or?
I, we will yield to the next.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Susan?
Uh, Justin, I'm sorry.
About how many more people?
Well, for cross exam, I'm seeing, uh, eight.
Okay. You're, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Hold on just one moment, Mr. Decker.
I make a motion that we stop at our scheduled meeting time because this obviously is not going to be finished tonight or with another meeting. So I don't see any point in extending it into the night.
I would like to see if we could get all of those eight people done. If it goes a little bit past nine thirty, I would be okay with that. Um, but I, you know, like, eh, there's eight more people that have waited the
That's forty minutes.
The three hours.
So do we have, we have a motion on the floor, so we have to see if there's a second and go from there.
Is there a second to stop at nine thirty?
Second.
That's a second from Tom Anderson.
Roll call vote, please.
Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood. Anderson.
Yes.
Elwell.
No.
It's three to two to not go past nine thirty.
Motion carries?
Nope.
All right, it doesn't carry.
You have to have four affirmative votes with, no matter what. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to extend to nine thirty. Your, your mic's not on.
You're muted.
Okay, I'll move to, we extend it to nine forty-five.
Do I have a second? All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Roll call vote, please.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes. Motion carries. Susan?
Okay, so we have till nine forty-five for moving through this here. So the next person I have down is Justin Decker. Are you still there, Justin?
Yes, can you hear me?
Thanks, Justin. Yep.
All right, I'll reduce my comments to one and make it quick. This is directed towards the board. Uh, what is the enforcement when their greenhouse isn't emitting light all night and, and, and these things that they say will not happen? I find it extremely hard to believe that none of that will go on. What is the ramifications of that?
Well, Justin, they haven't testified to that tonight other than to say that they would do that. So it, for this particular question, we're gonna hold off on that till testimony later on, but we will have that as a question written down for later. Um, because, you know, unless you have a way to direct it directly to one of the petitioners.
No, I'll, I'll let someone else talk then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Susan?
Adam Watson.
Hello, Adam Watson. Thank you for taking the time. First of all, um, one question is for, uh, Stefan. Um, is the facility that you're growing out in Oakland, is it medical out there as well, medical only?
Mr. Watson, um, he did not testify to, um, if it was medical or if it was, um, recreational.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Uh, John, um, Litchfield, you mentioned, uh, bringing money back into the community. Um, do you know, is there specifics on tax benefits for the county? The local area even to the township? What type of money that would bring in?
Um, I'm not, I'm not as far as the tax laws and stuff. I, I, I don't know for sure. Like, I like to try not to speak about, I don't know, but, um, you know, we're, me and Blake, you know, we're both sports guys and we're very interested in, you know, our, you know, donating to like the high school, the sports teams, the schools, the kids, you know, stuff like that is where we would, if it was our choice, where we would want to donate the most. As far as what the county does with the tax dollars, I know there's gonna be eventually, oh, income comes out of this place and if whoever gets the tax dollars for it will reap huge benefits. I do know that, but on, on top of that, what we're gonna do, you know, what we see fit with it and open to all suggestions.
Okay, uh, didn't necessarily answer my question, I guess. Um, one final, one final.
Your question, sir.
One final question is, um, the B, back to the, John Hall, I guess this was back to you, um, the B four zoning. Um, what is B four zoning?
That's our general business district.
And where, give me a, a, an example of where that would be in Champaign or Bana roughly?
Well, uh, most of it is in Champaign or Bana, uh, the, around the perimeter. If you imagine driving north on forty-five out of Urbana, there's a lot of B four along forty-five. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it is. It is. It's, I'm trying to get an understanding and it, and it has to do with, um, in here, it states that a adult use craft cannabis grower can or may share premises with a cannabis dispensing organization in the B four district without a special use permit. And you guys were speaking on the, uh, B four districting and I'm just trying to make sure this is a, that dispensing is a, it's one of the biggest hangups that it seems to really, uh, set with the, with the neighbors. Um, uh, among other things, but I'm just wanting to make sure that this isn't something that can come in.
Uh, 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 let's see. Yeah, right. On- once you have B four, uh, either a dispensary or the craft grower is allowed by right. So getting that rezoning to B four is what would be essential. And frankly, I feel it's almost impossible at this location, but there's no guarantee either way.
Uh, understand, understand. Okay, um, that's, that's all and I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is John.
John, I can't hear you, John.
I was gonna say, I, I can guarantee you that we're not doing dispensary. I can guarantee that'll never happen.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Susan?
William Midstark.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Hi, uh, my name's William Midstark. Thank you board for your time, everybody else. I just had a quick question for John Litchfield. Um, you talked about the security cameras you're gonna have. And this isn't to do with the security lighting, but the security cameras, you stated it would be uh, video and audio recording, is that correct?
Um, if, when, when need to, like, there, if, if, when, when it needs to be, yes, not full-time. You know, there's, there's, I mean, multiple different settings on it, you know, record, okay, motion, start recording, start, start lighting up. We could set it to however we want. We could have it record twenty-four hours a day or we could have it do nothing until there's motion detected and then it rushes the lights, the recording, it rushes right over to where there's motion. Now, there will be, you know, live all the time, like, recording and live is two different things. Like, I can look on my phone, I can see it live. But if I don't see it live, is it recorded? No, not unless I make it recorded, you know?
So, so you're gonna have audio live when you look at it twenty-four seven, correct?
Mr. Midstark, um, he did not testify to audio. It was just lighting and camera and
I believe, I believe he said it was gonna be audio as well. I wrote it down. I mean, I, maybe I'm mistaken, but I'm pretty sure that's what he said.
Oh, okay, and I could, I could help you out here. So if you looked at any advanced security camera, you would never find one anymore that doesn't have the audio option also. So I could tell you from doing extensive research on these cameras, all of them can do video, anything you want them to do.
I was just, well, I was just, I didn't think banks even had audio, so I didn't really know why you would need audio. I understand the video, but the audio, that's all I had.
Yeah, no, I don't, I never said anything about no audio personally, because I don't think we need that, but there's a, there's a micro, like, there's the cameras also. Talk through a microphone out, like, if I see somebody, hey, oh, you, there's a microphone and it projects, you know?
That, that's all I had. I heard audio, but you know, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Midstark. Susan?
Todd Herbert.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Todd Herbert. Uh, couple of questions. For the use of medical marijuana, are you gonna be extruding oil on the property? Question for John Hall, or John Litchfield.
Mr. Herbert, uh, he did not, uh, or there was no
Yes, there was. He did, there was a slight mention of oil and not, I mean, I don't remember the context of it, but I do remember there being oil mentioned.
Well, they, they mentioned for medical marijuana, I'm assuming oil.
Blake or John, can you hear us?
Oh. I mean, from my understanding, this only be, will be a cultivation and not, uh, manufacturing or extraction, uh, facility. At least, that's not, uh, while we're getting the license, uh, while we are applying for the license today.
Okay.
Okay, second question. For John Litchfield, I guess, he's been talking about the most. On the greenhouse, is there gonna be ventilation fans running most of the year? I'm sure they'll have to heat it this time of year. Can you tell us a little bit about that? Will you be using CO2 in there?
Those things were not mentioned in testimony, actually, so we're gonna have to hold off that question for, uh, the witness register at another time.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all you've got, Mr. Herbert, for now?
Uh, I've got more, but I'll pass on the time to someone else.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. Susan?
Betsy Lancaster.
Do we have four more?
Um, Betsy Lancaster here. My question is for John Litchfield. Um, regards to the security plans, a lot of the systems you're talking about are like, you even mentioned Amazon. Um, do you have a plan in place for the internet? I mean, for the security cameras or will you rely on the internet?
No, um, the internet is not good enough. Be liable for that. Um, it, the cell, the cameras
We can't hear you, John.
Um, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, no, we will not be relying on that, the internet, that, up there, so far as of now. Our security cameras will be running off a cell network.
Okay, so I, I, you were cutting out, so I heard you say your security cameras will be running off of separate networks, is that correct?
Cellier, a cell, cell network.
A cell network, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, have you, is that what you currently are, are using out there? I just know from personal experience, um, the cellular system and we had a backup with cellular. And when the phones went out, it's questionable if the cell signal was strong enough that we would have outages fairly regularly. Have you looked into this at all?
Yes, I have and I still got a camera out there now. I could even pull it up on my phone. Um, it works great. I mean, it worked, I'm real, I'm real, I'm real happy with it. I mean, it just shows every little, little detail and I haven't had one problem in, uh, forty-three days running. Um, I got pulled up on my phone right here, you know? Um, no, everything's ran smooth so far. Hopefully it stays that way.
Hey, do you have any other questions?
No, I believe that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Betsy.
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. Susan?
Ed Decker.
Mr. Decker.
Hmm, looks like he might have disappeared there. Ed Decker? I'm asking him to unmute, we'll see. Ed Decker? Ed, we can't hear you if you are talking. Okay, we'll try him again in a minute. Uh, Lori? Lori Quick?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Lori, yeah.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, Ms. Quick.
Okay, this is Lori Quick. I live at fourteen sixty-six hundred North Toluana, Illinois, which is just a mile west of where this facility is. My question is, they, they keep referring to Oakland facility. What state is this in?
That's in California.
Okay, what is the proximity of this facility to residential area?
Uh, about six hundred fifty.
Can, um, okay, I guess I don't have any other question except for the board. Would you want this type of facility across the street from you?
Well, we appreciate your question, but that's not something that we can, with, we cover during cross exam, so, um, if they chose to speak. Very good. Do you have any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quick. Susan?
Okay, Ed Decker, can you hear us? All right, um. Eric Bustle.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Eric Bustle. I'm the Philo Township Supervisor. I, first off, want to thank the board and I want to thank the petitioners. Um, I have a question for John Litchfield. Uh, earlier you testified that you were going to essentially go above and beyond to address the security and other types of concerns for the neighbors. My question is, is how do you go about finding out what those are going forward as part of this process?
Um, well, uh, you know, I learned a lot tonight. I will say that, um, tonight was, was really big. But, uh, I, I, uh, I, I, you know, I got a lot of thinking about to do about, oh, after everything I've tried about what's gonna best fit the rest. So, I mean, there's, there's more than one ways to do, all these things are gonna be hard because there's ways to do each one if you wanted. And tonight, from learning about Philo and the residents a little bit, And tonight, from learning about Philo and the residents a little bit, it's a big, I've heard a lot, I will say. I'm sure it's what he has as far as what is going to bug people and what, I feel like I needed this interaction right here.
Thank you very much for your willingness to do that and that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Bustle.
That is all I have for cross exam. People with their hands raised. So at this point, we are seven minutes from closing down this meeting. So we need to explain what's going to happen with, uh, future testimony at least, so people understand.
So we have another seven minutes before the end of the meeting. We are going to continue this meeting. The date of the continuance will be within a hundred days and we will discuss the continuance right now.
Sir, um, can, am I allowed to make, am I, is, um, is there any way within a hundred days? Like, is there any way, I mean, obviously we're wanting to get things rolling as soon as possible or either find out no or yes as soon as possible. And I know there's only so much control you have over that, but, um, is there any way that we can make it? Is there anything I can do to make it to where the meeting's like, uh, not, not a hundred days away or even near that? Or no? I understand, I, I was just wondering.
The, the next available meeting day that's open is April fifteenth.
Yep.
They aren't, they didn't, they didn't come right.
Um, okay, muting all. Hang on. Okay, so what we just heard is that John said the next available meeting is April fifteenth and what is a hundred days out, John-ish?
Uh, a hundred days is May thirteenth.
Does the Board have any inclination?
Me personally, I think there's going to be some, uh, pretty good amount of testimony. On April fifteenth, there does not seem to be any cases as of today, correct? With your experience, Mr. Hall, do you think we would be able to get through the, the testimony on, on the April fifteenth date?
Uh, we should be able to get through the testimony. Uh, it's not clear to me that, uh, there could be a final determination. I think, you know, the petitioner's got a lot of work to do between now and the next meeting.
Blake and John, do you think you would be able to get the information that we've asked for by April fifteenth?
Well, actually a week before April fifteenth.
Well, uh, right. Uh, they're muted, Susan?
The, I'm asking them to unmute. There they go.
John, so let me ask that question one more time. Do you think that you would be able to get us the information in time for the April fifteenth meeting?
I do think so, but I do want to clarify, just so it's all in black and white. What exactly, can we, can we do a rundown of what, what exactly you expect by then, just so it's right out there?
This is Susan, this is Susan Bergstrom and, uh, staff is preparing a list and we'll base it off of reviewing the minutes and things for tonight. And, you know, based on what the Board has said, because we're short on time right now, I think it's going to be a kind of a long list, but we will get back with you as soon as we can on that.
And let me ask you this, a blueprint with detailed plans is going to cover a lot of it, right?
I would think so.
Okay, thank you so much. Absolutely. I protect all the time for construction projects, so I got, you know, access to one of them that'll kind of get what I get, need, get taken care of, done, so.
Okay, Board, we have three minutes.
Well, it, it was nine forty-five. All right, um, so do I have a motion to continue case? Nine, nine, whoops. Nine, nine, eight dash S dash two, one, two, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Roll call vote.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes, motion carries. So at the April fifteenth meeting, uh, we will have time for, um, testimony on the information that's going to be provided by the petitioner as well as, um, anyone else who would like to testify. John, is there a staff report?
No.
Is there any other business before the, the Board?
The March twenty-fifth meeting?
February twenty-fifth meeting, you mean?
February twenty-fifth, sorry.
You ready to cancel that?
Do I have a motion to extend the meeting by four minutes, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Andor. Roll call vote, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Roberts. Wood.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes, motion carries. Um, so the February twenty-fifth meeting, have we decided to, to go ahead and cancel that?
We, we have nothing scheduled for it.
You're still short staffed, is it?
I thought last, we, we decided not to schedule anything for the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, that was my understa-
Yeah.
So do you want to cancel it or just leave it hanging?
If nothing's canceled, if nothing's scheduled, I say cancel it.
Do I have a second?
You made a motion.
That's a motion, yes.
Second.
So we have a motion to cancel the February twenty-fifth meeting. Roll call vote, please.
That would be Randall.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Elwell.
Yes. Motion carries. Any absences? Not hearing any. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ooh, thank you, Mr. Wood. Roll call vote, please.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Anderson.
No.
Randall.
Yes.
Elwell.
Gotta be a yes. He got you.
Yes. You got me, Mr. Anderson. Hurts right here. Motion carries.
Are you guys done with us then, or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you for your time and patience tonight.
Thank you guys so much for hearing all of us.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch soon.
Right. Thank you.
Night, all.
Pleasure doing business with you.